Without my glasses.
You're giving us five more minutes?
It's a Russian, it's on YouTube.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the July 23rd, 2024 Millbury City Council meeting, and I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Pappen. Councilmember Cahalan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Fung.
Here.
All members of the City Council are present.
Thank you so much, and for those who are able, would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, please be seated. And for those who are interested in speaking under public communication for items not on tonight's agenda, you must raise your hand on Zoom and submit your speaker slip to the city clerk.
Currently, I have three hands raised online, and I have a total of five public comments so far.
Okay, so we'll have to submit your speaker slip to the city clerk by 7:15 tonight. Again, raise your hand and submit your speaker slip by 7:15 for public communications and for all other items. You can raise your hands when the item is heard. All right, first item's up is ceremonial presentation, and we have proclamation proclaiming September 2nd, 2024 as Labor Day, and we have Teamster 856 Representative Mark Leach joining us today. But Councilmember Pappen, would you like to lead us for that?
I would, thank you. And it does seem a little early, but we don't generally meet next month. So, "City of Millbury proclamation, whereas Labor Day is observed annually on the first Monday of September to honor and recognize the vital contributions of the labor movement and the men and women whose work has built our state and nation. And whereas workers have worked tirelessly to organize rallies and strikes to advocate for labor reform, Labor Day was made to demonstrate the contributions of the working class towards America's economic prosperity and industrial strength. And for the years, the labor movement has won many battles, such as establishing a 40-hour work week, eliminating child labor, securing health and safety protections for workers, and protecting the right to organize." PRO Act was established to empower workers to exercise their freedom to organize and negotiate for better wages and working conditions. These changes have increased worker protections and strengthened the institution that hold corporations accountable. And whereas Labor Day is a creation of the labor movement and is dedicated to the social and economic achievements of American workers, we not only celebrate and thank workers, but we strive to keep improving working conditions and opportunities. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbury City Council, proclaim September 2nd, 2024 as Labor Day. And as a former member of a labor union, very glad to see this. Okay, we have our representative?
Yes, I think we have on Zoom tonight joining us Teamster 856 Representative Mr. Mark Leach.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I'm Mark Leach, I'm the Teamster's 856 representative. We proudly represent the public sector workers in the city of Millbury. I want to thank the city for issuing the proclamation and remembering that Labor Day is not just a day off work, but it's a day to reflect on work, and more importantly, on workers. We humans work, it's what we do. We collect the garbage, we drive the transit, we run things like the wonderful wastewater treatment plant right there in Millbury. And right now, in this meeting, there are people taking notes, operating cameras and microphones, and that's work. So our labor unions, we are organizations with a goal of improving work, making it safer, making it productive and rewarding, and then negotiating to make sure it is fair, that the worker is getting something in return. So thank you, Millbury City Council, for recognizing workers on this Labor Day 2024. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Leach, and look forward to seeing you in the near future. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Next up, we have the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Safety and Presentations and Recognition. Tonight, we're particularly thankful that we have Deputy Matthew Lennon joining us today. And as a sheriff deputy, Matthew Lennon has consistently demonstrated exceptional commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents, and his professionalism, integrity, and Tyler's work ethics have made a significant impact on our community. The City of Millbury hereby commands Deputy Sheriff Matthew Lennon on his explanatory service to the Millbury community. Thank you, Deputy Lennon, for your continued commitment to making Millbury a safer and a better place for all of our residents, our businesses, and our visitors. Thank you so very much. Would you like to say a few words, Deputy?
I have a whole presentation, it's gonna be a lot of words. Thank you very much. It's quite a surprise, I wasn't planning on giving that speech. It's been a real joy to be here in the city of Millbury. With my recent promotion, I'm probably gonna end up leaving, but it is bittersweet. I was very happy here. I have literally zero complaints about being here. You got something?
And then we got Chief.
Real quick, Mayor Fung, Vice Mayor Goodman, and city council members, and members of the city of Millbury visiting us tonight. Just real quick on now Sergeant Lennon on his recent promotion as of the last week or two. For those of you that don't know, Matt has been our motor officer for the past three years. Hopefully, none of you have met him in the field on the bike. But as you know, we have significant challenges when it comes to traffic safety here in the city of Millbury. So now Sergeant Lennon has been meeting those head-on for the past three years, and over that time, he has issued over 2,200 citations in the city of Millbury. So by far, the number one producer when it comes to traffic safety in the sheriff's office. So he'll be missed, but we'll find somebody else to fill his shoes. But just so we can real quick recognize his contributions to the safety of the city of Millbury. And now he does have a presentation for us, so.
Yeah, and I will say this, Sergeant, we measure the success of our public safety team such as yourself, not so much certainly not looking at how many tickets were issued, but rather, you know, how sometimes, oftentimes, no news is good news in this line of work. And that's the important thing, you know, not having to be on the news for the wrong reason, and you know, is practically the reward of us having good work at public safety and ensuring every motorist, every pedestrian, every resident, every business is safe here in Millbury. So thank you so very much for your dedication, your work in keeping Millbury a safe place for all of us. Truly, thank you from the bottom of my heart. And anyone on my council would like to say a few words? Afterwards? Okay, all right. So can we have your presentation? I know you're gonna have something for us.
Okay, so again, my name's Sergeant Mattlin, and I work with the sheriff's office, and I'm assigned to the city of Millbury. A little bit of background about me, just in case you guys haven't. Thank you. A little bit of background about me, just in case you guys don't know, I've been with the sheriff's office for about eight years now, traffic in the city of Millbury for about four, two years definitely full-time in the city of Millbury. Before that, I was a little bit of part-time and pulled between a couple other bureaus here. I have 400 hours of education related to collisions and traffic safety at the office. I'm one of those people that they say live in free traffic. I've attended numerous traffic safety conferences and summits. I teach traffic collision for not only our own agency, but other agencies within the state of California, and I'm a member of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Accident, Major Accident Investigation Team, and we do our investigations of fatal and major accidents throughout the county. So brief topics that I want to go over tonight, I want to review and show data from 2020, 2021, and 2023 before the hand that goes up is a worse 2022. The Office of Traffic Safety hasn't released the data from 2022 yet, and the 2023 data I actually pulled from our own records. So I can show where we're at as of last year, and I can show where we're at in 2020 and 2021. I'll show some maps that I produced. They go over our collisions and our collision data, and also our enforcement data. I'll talk a little bit about the sheriff's office activities and what we've actually been doing to combat traffic collisions and fatalities and injuries within the city of Millbury, a couple of rising issues that I want to discuss, and then just a general overview of what you guys can do to make sure our roads. Thanks. So this is OTS, Office of Traffic Safety, and they produced this 2020 data. This is the city of Millbury. They take all the cities within the state of California, and they group them by letter. So we're our letter E. Basically, it says that we, as a city, are going to be compared to other like population cities, so they're not going to compare us to San Francisco, they're not going to compare us to LA, because obviously, the populations are very extreme. I'm obviously going to ask you guys to look at the highlight sections here. Basically, it says pedestrians that were victims of killed and injured were 18. The OTS ranking is 1 of 103. This is one of those situations where being 1 is not good. This is, we are number one in the state of California with pedestrians that were injured and killed in 2020 for like population cities. Similar thing for pedestrians over 65, we're number one. This is in 2020, and not the best of data here. All right, so we'll move forward to 2021. It's been one year. Again, we're still in the same population. We're number four now. So we are moving in a good direction, but we're still pretty high up on there for victims that are injured and killed in accidents. Our pedestrian 65 and over hasn't really changed, but obviously, some other cities probably had some issues that year. 2022, I don't have the data for OTS, didn't compile it yet, they haven't released it, and I wasn't compiling data using our records for 2022 yet. I wasn't here. So as of 2023, we have 124 reported traffic collisions. If you are involved in a collision within the city of Millbury and you don't report to the police, we don't know, we don't keep track of it. Nine were major, so that we're talking people lose consciousness, they have some sort of injury with required stitches, broken bones, stuff like that. But I am happy to report in 2023, so far as I know, there has been zero fatalities. So we're moving from being number one in the state to a little over four years being at zero. So that's definitely major steps in a very good direction. I would like to point out that overall, the majority of collisions within the city of Millbury are non-injury collisions, so they're normally just minor fender benders where info can be exchanged, but we take reports to help that. As I said, I wanted to give you guys some maps, some visual data. I'm a big visual person. This is every 2023 collision that was reported to the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office mapped out on the city of Millbury. This is all our 2023 enforcement data that we did in the city of Millbury. So I would like to kind of point out, if we go back and forth between these two slides, sorry. The majority of collisions obviously happen on El Camino, it's a major thoroughfare in our city. But we do take where collisions happen, and we do definitely do enforcement off of where those collisions happen. So as you can see, the enforcement data is pretty similar to where all of our collisions are happening. We're trying to figure out what's going on with these intersections and what's going on with drivers here, and really try and stop people from running a stop sign, or being on their phone, or speeding. Other things that the sheriff's office has been doing, especially here in the city of Millbury, we participate in STEP, it's a saturated traffic enforcement program. It's countywide. This is the couple times a year where you'll see, all of a sudden, the city of Millbury has lots and lots and lots of motor officers in and about the city. So we saturate areas, and we do a lot of traffic enforcement and education in that area to advise and educate people to follow the rules. We do a lot of enforcement around our schools. I'm sure a lot of people have kids, have seen us around the schools a lot more, especially like mornings and drop-offs. That's when we get a lot of complaints about people speeding. I will say that we're now lowering our school zone speeds to 15 miles an hour. So again, we're moving in the right direction, we're kind of keeping up with a lot of what other cities are doing around California. Recently, we did our bike rodeo, I don't know if anybody came out to that. We do a lot of safety programs where we can kind of communicate with the public, and we can kind of go over, you know, some safety rules, wearing a helmet, maybe following the rules even though you're on a bike, stuff like that. It's a lot of community involvement. I will say in 2023, as a total organization, there were 4,513 citations and warnings issued. We count them together. This does not include parking tickets, this does not include verbal warnings. This also does not include a, let's say, a officer made a traffic stop, and the the driver was arrested for some reason. So then, yeah. We obviously use all this data to target our problem areas, and that's how we mainly try and focus and tamper down what's going on in our community. We work with Public Works, I love our Public Works guys. Hey, there's been times where I'm like, hey, maybe there should be a sign here, maybe something needs to be repainted. And I'm telling you, like, I feel like sometimes they get it done in the same hour. It's crazy. So there's a big thing about traffic enforcement. We do a lot of education, we do a lot of enforcement, but another third of it is engineering. So those traffic guys and those Public Works guys are definitely a big help. And then responding to requests for enforcement. So I know there's a lot of requests for enforcement. I'm mainly the main traffic guy. A lot of our other deputies do traffic enforcement, but I'm the one that's solely dedicated to it. So we definitely go out there and we try and answer all those calls for service where, hey, these guys are speeding in my neighborhood, or everybody's running the stop sign, and we definitely try and focus on that. Our biggest arising issue in the city of Millbury, e-bikes. This is not unique to the city of Millbury. This is a state issue. There are laws and loopholes and laws that really haven't been figured out, even on a state or other local levels, and a lot of local cities are trying to figure out what are we doing with these e-bikes. So big things about these e-bikes, they are twice as fast as a normal bike. On average, they do about 27 miles an hour from the factory, sometimes they do about 30, and then you can go and soup it up, and you can be doing 40 down El Camino. So they will, I will tell you, it's pretty obvious that e-bike usage is very up, but also nationwide, helmet usage is very down, which isn't a good mix at all. Children under 14 account for almost 40% of injuries involving e-bikes. I will tell you that we've had a number of minors, people under 18, involved in e-bike accidents, wearing a helmet, not wearing a helmet, but they do account for substantial now of people riding e-bikes and then are involved in a collision. There is no age limit on an e-bike in a Class 1. So your 10-year-old can be on an e-bike, and it's legal in the state of California. They should be wearing a helmet, but your 10-year-old is basically on an electric motorcycle. Often, riders are not familiar with the rules. Again, if we have a 10-year-old or 12-year-old, they haven't had a license, they don't have driving experience, they don't know the rules of the road, so they might be zipping in and out. That's a normal cause of collisions, especially with the younger riders. And that's gonna go with rider inexperience, the reckless riding. And then blind spots, you're talking about a really quiet bike, and drivers aren't paying attention, somebody's on their cellphone, and he's sitting in your blind spot. What can you guys do? As always, we're always asked that you slow down. I would say that the majority of the time, when I get a complaint in a neighborhood about people speeding, everybody lives there. Everybody lives within like three blocks of there, and everybody's speeding to get home. I get it, we all live busy lives, but if you drive like you live there and slow down a little bit, we're all gonna get there safer. Wear your seatbelt, that little bit of fabric is gonna save your life. Unfortunately, I've seen it, but please wear your seatbelt. Don't text and drive. I know we're all kind of guilty of, oh, I just need to shoot this text, or I just want to see what somebody said. But again, that split second that you're taking your eyes off the road, you're traveling a substantial distance, and you can cause an accident. Always wear your helmet. This is a big one, again, with the e-bikes, and I know it's not cool. I was a teenager once, I know it's not cool to wear your helmet, or at least it wasn't when I was a teenager, but your helmet is gonna save your life, just like that seatbelt. And then if you have a minor, or a kid, or a teenager, whatever, and they're riding the e-bike around, or they're talking, they're, you know, walking to school, just talk about road safety, talk about looking both ways before you cross the street, talk about riding your bike in a safe manner. It's gonna go a long way. I think that's it for my presentation. Again, I told you it's gonna be pretty good news, so I think we're moving in the right direction on a lot of things. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Sergeant. Any council members? Councilmember Ash Snyder?
Thank you. Some of these, I don't see our Public Works Director here. I love the data. I also serve on CCAG Bike Pedestrian Committee, and both the mayor and I serve on the State of California Transportation Communications and Public Works Committee. And at our last meeting at CalCities, and at the last BPAC meeting, we talked about e-bikes, and Millbury BPAC is very concerned with e-bikes. So when I saw the slide in the packet, it's like, great, we need more of this. And Chief, I'm very grateful for the bike rodeo on May 11th and all the helmets we handed out. But do you think there's something we can do, maybe more outreach to Taylor and the two high schools in Millbury, and talk about e-bikes? Because the complaint I'm getting from a lot of adults in Millbury is, we're afraid for all of these children, and they're going that fast without helmets.
Sure, council member. So we have a great relationship with the new school superintendent. So in advance of the school year starting, we'll be happy to sit down with her and...
Oh, for Millbury Elementary School District? Great, okay.
Yeah, and see if we can get in the schools and do some education as well. I know, so Matt, even though he's promoted, he's not leaving us just yet. So we'll still have this resource in town. Then we have a former Millbury deputy coming up to replace him eventually.
Great. And if you could give me language that you, in the field, think would help on e-bikes, sorry, e-bikes, I'll get that straight up to Sacramento on that. I mean, I know there's a police chief component of CalCities, but we're there, and this is our bailiwick, and everybody around the state is worried about e-bikes and kids.
And, you know, unfortunately, we have a recent, we can't share a ton of detail because a minor was involved, but we have some real horror stories that we can share that I think will resonate with these youth, because the last thing anybody wants to see as a parent, these kids hurt, and for them to have peers seriously injured, I think will resonate. So we'll sanitize that the best we can to share.
But definitely language that could go into a state law, because right now, we recognize that all cities are gonna do things individually, and then all of you are gonna have the smorgasbord of what works in this city doesn't work in that city. So if we can do something statewide, let me help on that.
Thank you.
Other question, on the data for collisions, on that, how are we sharing that with Public Works who write the grants? Because as a longtime grant reader, it's really great to have, I'm sorry to say this, the data, especially from 2020, is very helpful in us possibly getting bike pedestrian grants. So are we making sure that we're sharing that data with Public Works so that they include it in our grants?
So the 20, all the OTS data is publicly available online?
Okay. Yeah, sometimes they're busy, and if we can make sure that they're getting it.
Absolutely.
And I can keep nagging about them using it, it will help.
Yeah, so we can definitely make sure that they get it. Again, all the data is available online. The public can even look at, I don't have like an unusual login or anything for it. I'm just waiting for 2022 to come out, so we can really piece it all together.
Okay. And last question, sorry, all the technical stuff. Because we're part of the sheriff's department, the sheriff has data collection for people that drive within three feet of a cyclist on that. So we can get data from Millbury. Do we have any data on that from Millbury? It's Millbury, San Carlos, Half Moon Bay, and then unincorporated, if I remember.
On the actual rule violation?
On the kind of, the car, the drivers who do not realize that they should not drive right onto a back of a cyclist on that.
Yeah, I can pull that data, I don't have it readily available. We, I could pull you the data that would give you warnings that were issued, and then also citations that were issued.
Great.
Again, if a verbal warning was issued, it'd be verbal.
Great. And most likely, I'll be off BPAC at the county level, because I'll step off as a council member, but they would love to see this data. And if you've, Chief, anybody, the sheriff has anybody that would like to come and talk at BPAC, you spoke to us a year ago about the new law, but giving us updates like this would be great. Thank you, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Sergeant. Okay, councilmember Pappen?
Thank you, congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
I'm glad I wasn't one of those numbers in your ticket count. I do think it would be exceptionally helpful to provide this education at the elementary school and the middle school, because I've seen the e-bikes ride right through Central Park. Two persons on a bike, I don't know, how many are you actually allowed to have on those?
It's dependent on the bike. So you can kind of tell, like, some bikes are meant.
Right.
And like, some of them, they're just sitting on the handlebars, so it's a situational dependent. But I've definitely seen where there's, you know, two or three kids on one bike.
Okay, and education is key here. Thank you very much for all of that. In your diet, one of your slides, there's dots all over our city. So, yeah, the, like, that one and the one before it, I think. So, yeah, is there any data or information that we can utilize, for instance, lighting, the time of day when these incidents occurred? Because I've always been one that feels more lighting on El Camino Real is helpful, and I do appreciate Public Works and your taping, that red reflective taping is extremely helpful. So if you have anything like that, we have talked about, too, if we could do a pilot program, because we have the widest part of El Camino in all of San Mateo County. I've seen where you push the button to walk across, and it won't stop until you break the barrier on the other side. And I do have a problem with our flashing lights, because the pedestrian doesn't know when it's going. It's not visible to the pedestrian. They push the button, and then they have to look to see if the cars are stopping. They need to know when that light is flashing and when they can walk. So we need to work somehow on that, so that the pedestrian knows, okay, now the cars are gonna have to stop for me. And do you have any...
Yeah, we can talk with Director Batiste and see if there's any solutions to that. I will say that those lights have significantly impacted the pedestrian vehicle incident out on El Camino.
Positively or negatively impacted?
Positively.
Okay, good.
Yes, quite a bit. Yeah.
Yeah. So if, I'm sorry, I'm making you do work here. Can you go back to our 2020 slide? I think it's like the third one in. So I believe the city of Millbury didn't put these all in at once, it was over a number of years, but we're going from where we were having the number one in the state, having these vehicle versus pedestrian collisions, and we're installing these lights. And the data clearly shows that our pedestrian-involved collisions where they're injured and killed are going down to, as of 2023, zero. So we went from being number one in the state to being zero. So other than the lights and maybe some other minor engineering thing, that's pretty much the only change, that's how to significantly positive change. As for data that you can, other data that you can use to like, maybe find some sort of violation or some other way that you can do some engineering, the maps that I have, every single one of those points on my end is clickable. I can view that collision, I can view the cause of that collision, or will we determine the cause of that collision to be, and any other associated factors. So that might be usable data again.
Yeah, again, time of day can be reflective of, you know, usually dusk and those, or the sun's in your eyes, and that could be helpful to us in one way, shape, or form. But again, too, if we can do anything about improving the pedestrian's view of those lights, the cars have it, but the pedestrian does not know when that light is flashing and when they can actually go. and when they can actually go. So if you could help us on that front. And two, again, I'd be curious on some of these, as exactly, if it was at night, where the streetlight was? Because I do think it's very difficult in some areas for people to see pedestrians, even when pedestrians rightly crossing. It's just, how is the, how are the crosswalks lit? Especially in the areas off of El Camino, it's really difficult to see people as they step into the crosswalk and cars are, they're stopped, but they just didn't look.
I get it. These aren't all pedestrian collisions, these are all the collisions, so they might be vehicle-vehicle. Again, all these...
That's a fair fight.
Sometimes, it depends on what type of vehicle. Again, all these are clickable links for me, so I can determine what vehicles were involved, what time of day, and ultimately, what we believe contributed to the collision. So definitely some stuff that we can try and share with Public Works if we find that we're continuously having the same collision. It's probably not a driver thing, it's probably an engineering.
I appreciate your passion for all this as well, thank you so much.
Again, I live and breathe traffic at this point, so...
Now you can have more fun tonight. Thank you so much.
That's good to have you. Councilmember Cahalan.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this presentation. I know this is a topic that many residents are very interested in, and come to council and ask about and talk about, so it's wonderful to have this information to share, not just with us, but our whole community. And it's very exciting to see the success and increased safety that we've had. I just want to echo and expand a little bit of the sentiments of, you know, any data we have, or that we can use, not just for bike and pedestrian grants, but also any grants that we can get around traffic calming and increasing the engineering features would be great. You mentioned the website and this being accessible to everybody. Maybe we could get this link, the link to this, and put it in the council meeting minutes, so people have access to the data? And I don't know if there's other places we could, we could put it on the, we could put it on the website?
To the extent possible, this data is Sheriff's Office data...
Oh, got it.
But we can certainly share and link to that OTS data.
Although OTS data is publicly available.
Okay, that would be great.
And Twitter data is as well, and we can link that as well.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, Sergeant and Chief. Would you like to, we have a certificate for you, Sergeant, and for your many years of service and the dedication to all of us, so please join us for a quick photo. Councilmember Papin, you have another additional comment?
Yes, hi, before the sheriffs all leave. Just went to an event that Supervisor Canepa had, and I guess the city of San Mateo has our canine comfort animals. They're using them at the schools, they're not necessarily your typical law enforcement canine, but it does seem to be quite successful in the city of San Mateo, and might be helpful to the Sheriff's Department in differing situations, because y'all can be kind of intimidating when you show up somewhere, but if you had a cute little puppy, if you could, just right over there? Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. We actually do have several therapy canines, I believe they're called. One, our most famous would be Ben. He's a, his handler actually just won National Social Media Award for this, the National School Resource Officer Association. So we'll make sure he gets some time in Milbrae, though. He's, I think, I believe, a labradoodle.
Labradoodle.
Like you said, not a typical sheriff, or not a typical canine, but...
That'd be great.
Good-looking dog.
I think, you know, make you feel, people feel more comfortable, and this whole program was about loneliness and the benefits of having a pet, so that would be wonderful. Thank you so much, glad to hear.
All right, thank you. All right, so next up, we've got our environmental program manager, Andrea Papajon, presenting the environmental program's new initiatives. Thanks for joining us, Ms. Papajon.
Thank you, Mayor Fong, Vice Mayor Goodman, and councilmembers Andrea Papajon, City of Milbrae. I'd like to share with you some new initiatives in our environmental programs. So for the presentation tonight, first, I will talk about a few electrification programs that we're starting, and also a program to support our businesses for green business certification. Talk about an initiative for a new green team in the city, and give you a quick snapshot of our environmental calendar, and then just to spend a moment on the greenhouse gas inventory, request the county a collaboration, they'd like us to, they'd like to post it on their website. Next slide, please. So first electrification program is an upgrade to some streetlights to LEDs. We will be using PCE grant funding, we have up to 40,000 of grant funding, so we project that we'll be able to convert about 82 existing streetlights to LEDs. The project areas are in, listed below, the seven locations, and then on the map on the right. We chose these because they're a combination of some residential areas, and then also some busier streets, and we tried to also put them across the city. Next slide, please. For the upgrades, we will, in line with our Climate Action Plan Measure 14, and, you know, there are many benefits of upgrading to LED, you know, safer environment, as we just heard, energy savings, and also a lot of maintenance savings, because it reduces staff time, labor to go out and actually change out the light bulb more frequently when you have LEDs, it's just less labor. And so those are some of the benefits. And also, we anticipate the project to be completed in early 2025. We're actually in no rush to complete the project, because we'd like to do some testing of various temperature, and test different streets to see what the community likes, and then get their impact, input, and then decide which lighting to use. Next slide, please. So just one more slide on this project. We are very, environmental programs takes our impact in the environment very seriously, so we will be applying these five lighting principles for responsible outdoor lighting. This is from Dark Sky, it's a coalition of about 2,000 advocates on preserving the dark sky. And so we will be, you know, considering these principles when we choose the design and the temperature color. And on the right is the proposed fixture, it's an auto connect, it has, the lights are considered nighttime friendly, with a zero uplighting design, dimming function for low-use hours. And as I mentioned, we'll be testing probably the 2700 Kelvin and 3000 Kelvins, so those are warmer lights with less blue. Next slide, please. The next electrification program is a partnership with PCE, the EV Ready Program. That is to partner PCE to install EV chargers in multifamily dwellings. And so we are looking to do some co-brandies, some outreach together, and there's an example of a draft letter on the right that we'll be sending to all of our multifamily dwelling property owners. The program offers free technical support and project planning, and also provides incentives for installing EV chargers at like minimal to no cost. So we're really going to encourage all of our multifamily dwelling owners to take advantage of this really great opportunity to get EV charging in their, in their buildings. Next slide, please. Okay, then, next electrification program is to electrify landscape equipment. So the remainder of that PCE grant is 22,000 budget, and we would like to invest that back in our community, and offer incentives for electric leaf blowers and string trimmers. Those for our residents and businesses in Milbrae who have a business license, are landscapers. So we'd like to encourage the purchase of electric leaf blowers and the string trimmers at a Milbrae business, and offer 100 per household and 200 per landscaping business. And we anticipate launching this very soon in the fall. As you're aware, the California State Law AB 1346, there is a ban on the purchase of gas leaf blowers and lawn mowers and small off-road engines, so this will really help make the conversion easier for our residents and landscapers, so we're going to encourage them hopefully through this incentive. Next slide, please. And the, we'd also like to encourage our businesses to sign up for the green business program, and it's in our Climate Action Plan Measure 43. So we'd like to partner with the Chamber of Commerce, I'll be presenting to them on July 29th at their board meeting. Be great to partner with them to do outreach, and help get the word out to all the businesses that they become green business certified. We also want to have a workshop, so we'll hopefully figure out the best date to have a workshop for the businesses, so they can learn about the green business certification, how to do it. We'll walk them through the program and help them along the way. Next slide, please. We are going to start a city staff green team, and it'll be voluntary members from each department. The main goal is to really help get information out through all our city staff on local, state, and federal regulations, on environmental issues and regulations. And we also want to get a feedback from our staff, environmental programs wants to hear, hey, how can we best get this information out? What kind of messaging should we have around our city? Should we have more emails or signage? Just anything to really help everyone learn about all the regulations. Next slide, please. Here's a quick snapshot of our fiscal year '24, '25 events for environmental programs. You can see we have a packed calendar, and there's a QR code, you can take a snap of that, and it will be, sign up, and all the events can go right to your email or your phone. Next slide, please. And lastly, this is a partnership with the county. They did the 2021 greenhouse gas inventory for us, and they asked for permission to put it on their website, so we're going to give them permission so that people can access the greenhouse gas inventory. Next slide, please. And that is all, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Papajon. Anyone from the council? Go ahead, councilmember Papin.
Ms. Papajon, thank you very much. So the conversion for the gardeners, I know other cities have similar ordinances, they seem to be paying more. Would a gardener who operates, say, in Burlingame and Milbrae, be able to take advantage of some sort of incentives to go to electric?
Yeah, as long as they have, our thought is as long as they have a Milbrae business license as a landscaper, then we would like to give them an incentive.
Yep, they're very expensive. I know my gardener's been complaining, and actually got pulled over in Burlingame for not having one? Because I understand the conversion is like $2,700, so this is not an insignificant amount of money, but we welcome the quieter and better aspects of going electric in this realm. Can we, I guess the question is, can we do anything else to help them in the conversion?
Yeah, we can certainly look at the budget and the demand for the incentive. We wanted to encourage our landscapers to buy local Milbrae businesses, so...
Have we priced them? Do we even know what they cost?
We have priced them, we looked at outdoor supply, and they have some.
Well, yeah, how much do they cost?
So for the, actually, I don't know if I have the exact number off the top of my head, but I can get back to you on that. We felt that an incentive would be reasonable, if we have more budget, that would be great. This is just the remaining 22,000 in the Peninsula Clean Energy Grant.
Okay, well, maybe we can hit up Peninsula Green Energy for some more money, too.
Did I say green and Peninsula? Clean energy.
Clean energy, yes.
Thank you.
That would be very helpful, and thank you for all the work you're doing here. If you could explain more so, if you could go back, the slide that cuts down the lighting, where would we use something like that? That, right there, the auto connect, those things, nighttime friendly.
So we have a number of streetlights that are not LED.
Okay.
And so this would be...
How did that happen? I'm sorry, I thought we went all LED way back when.
We have an inventory, and we have many streetlights that are not LED yet.
I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, so this would be on top of the LED lights and reduce the upward light pollution, I think they call it?
Yeah, so this fixture would upgrade the current light to LED, and, yeah, some are, there are actually a few old LEDs that already need upgrading, but my notes here, this would, this fixture could be used either for the, a couple old types of lights that we have on our streets.
Okay, and if you could, at a future date, let us know how many, where we are in the LED realm, because I really thought we had converted everything, but I guess we haven't. I'd be curious to know how many we have left, and how far we've gotten.
I do have that number, and we have an inventory that we took approximately...
You don't have, yeah, I mean, if you have it now, great.
Twelve hundred streetlights that are not LED.
Twelve hundred, and how many streetlights do we have overall?
I don't know how many we have overall, I know that...
Take a pass on that one.
We, yeah.
Okay, sure.
We don't, yeah, so we budgeted to do, you know, 1,200, it would be, you know, $500,000 to $600,000 to upgrade all of them.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, if you could just let us know after the fact what we're looking at, that would be very helpful. And in that actual analysis, how much energy we are saving in this process would be helpful.
Yep, we would be saving energy and the maintenance, which is even larger, because the labor is even a greater savings.
That's a wonderful benefit.
So we did get a couple proposals to do all the lighting, to upgrade all of our street lighting to LED. Like I said, it was in the 500,000 to 600,000 range, and there are no incentives right now for upgrading to LEDs, that was a few years ago.
Yeah.
So we are just hoping to budget that maybe, you know, phase by phase. So we'll start here with, you know, a handful, and we'll take it from there.
It's a big handful, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. On the cost of, you said 500,000 to 600,000, is that for retrofit or replacement, or is there an opportunity to probably consider a less expensive retrofit?
It is just to upgrade to LED, and I believe I have a slide on that. Next one, yes. Nope, sorry, next one, please. So this project costs for about 82 upgrades, would be 33,000, so we have like a 40,000 budget. And I think, though, your question is it just, it's to upgrade the luminary, not the, you know, the bulbs, yeah, and there may be multiple bulbs in one streetlight.
Go ahead, councilmembers. Schneider?
A follow-up on the Vice Mayor's question. When we're talking about luminaries, we're talking about changing the fixture, I hope so we're doing less light... I hope so we're doing less light pollution and we're directing the light below. So sometimes you gotta pay to do the job the right way on that. Um, a couple of other questions, and all of it fantastic. I will say, all of this would be really cool if there was an annual report for every environmental program, how much it's saving us and where it's saving us, its carbon reduction capacity, and how it's moving us towards resiliency. So in my last four months, I'll be trying to push for that annual update of environmental programs. It's something we did in San Jose every year to prove why we needed to have an environmental budget. So basically, this is what we've done, this is what it costs, this is what we want to do next year. But I think this is great. The luminaries or the, the LED spectrums that you were talking about, and I know Sam's not here, so I can't make eye contact with him. The, the frequency that allows insects that bats eat. Are we going to pick the right frequency?
Yes, we are looking into that, and there, um, it's really interesting. There is another slide that I have, and yes, this one. We looked at light pollution, and, you know, there's so much surrounding light from other cities and SFO that even if we adjust our own, we're still going to have that light pollution. Um, but I think there's one more slide. Eduardo, please. Yep, so we're going to look at, like, probably test the 2,700 Kelvin and 3,000 Kelvin, and these have less blue and they're warmer. And these are what are recommended, um, by Dark Sky. We'll also work with our contractor to make sure they're the most environmentally-
Excellent, exciting, thank you. And it is a to-do list for the S, for SFO to realize that and the BART station, the amount of light pollution that comes from that and the impact. Because if we don't have bats, we lose the natural way of taking care of insects, including mosquitoes. So think West Nile virus on that. Um, in terms of the city green team, I couldn't be more excited. I've noticed that we no longer put recycled paper content, nor do we double-side photocopy sometimes. So those will be some things to kind of check, you know, maybe for more of the smaller meetings that happen on that. And, and then on the calendar, I know we've brought it up at Millbrae B-PAC. You're not usually our person there, but there's Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in November, which is a really fabulous day and a celebration of a young African-American, uh, girl who kicked off this whole environment. But it's a great way to teach parents to walk to school with their kids and hopefully not drive them. And it's in November. Maybe we can try to get that on the calendar?
Happy to add that.
Okay. It's one I've wanted to do. South City does a Ruby Bridges Day. Um, the city's farther south of us do it, but it's, it's just a really beautiful, it's a beautiful story and a beautiful day.
Thank you for your input.
All right, no further comments. Thank you so much, Ms. Papa John. I just, you know, just leave you with this. I know time is tight. Um, PCE routinely have different grants available, different opportunity for, um, you know, newer applicant. Uh, and every year we, you know, reevaluate our surplus funds, and this year we've, uh, done some exceptional work, and, and every agency was able to get their fair share, uh, of agency grants. So that's where all these fundings are coming from, uh, enabling us to continue to enhance some of the most important infrastructure of our community. Uh, but, you know, more to come, you know. Councilman Papin a moment ago saying that we should get some more, and we certainly will go after every single one of them. Um, but, you know, I think the EV charging in the multifamily is particularly important to assist, um, you know, some of the most needed part of our community, you know, with, um, some infrastructure work that they don't necessarily, um, have a choice to do it on their own oftentimes, you know, in a multifamily situation, so that they can purchase an EV vehicle and be able to charge it at home. Um, that, that's, that to us, to me, I think that's a big deal because that enable, you know, a whole group of, you know, most vulnerable part of our community to also be able to take advantage of not having to be relying on petroleum. So to me, that's, uh, that's particularly meaningful. So thank you so much for all your work, putting it all together.
You're welcome, and I agree, um, it's an extra amenity for multifamily dwellings to have EV charging, so it can add value. And then it really does help the tenants so that they can purchase EVs and not have to worry about where they're going to charge. So we are really going to do some good outreach, and really looking forward that we can partner with Peninsula Clean Energy, um, on this program. And we're also just grateful for all the grants that they have given us, so put them to good use.
We'll work hard for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, um, real quickly?
Yes, on the EV charging thing too, um, batteries are very important as far as, especially multi-housing units, um, the battery capacity, if we can help encourage that as well. And I would recommend not the slow charge. If you can get the fast chargers, it's really much easier, especially for people in, um, apartments and all of that, because they can cycle in and out. Thank you.
Will do. We'll definitely, uh, look for at least Level 2, um, if not Level 2 SE, which includes the other equipment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Papa John. Good work. All right, um, next up is, um, agenda review and staff briefing. Um, City Manager Tom Williams, would you please provide a City Manager update?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. And I hope you're all ready, because our Recreation Department has some exciting activity guides coming out for the fall that will hit mailboxes, uh, early next week. So it's probably one of the best lineups of fall activities that we have, packed with fantastic classes and programs for all ages from, um, you know, preschool to, uh, to our seniors. So, um, that will be in the mail. If you don't receive it in the mail, you can log on to, of course, the city's website and get all of the information, uh, on our fall activities. Um, the registration opens July 29th, and so spots fill up fast. So I encourage, encourage anybody that, uh, would like to, uh, look at our program and 10 classes to do it early. Also, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. So on July 12th, the Chamber, uh, membership met, uh, and appointed a new Board of Directors, um, 15 members. Um, this is a nice, really nice cross-section of business owners, and I'll, I'll read them off real quick. So we've got Gary Baranti, who, uh, is the owner of Leonardo's Italian Deli, uh, Fay Doughty, uh, Doughty Photography, Gordon Ditto, Ditto and Associates, who's a CPA, Ron Freyani, Associated Window Cleaning, Janet Fogarty, the Law Offices of Janet Fogarty, Quentin J., the owner of Bacchus Wine Shop, uh, uh, Leela Kirsch, who owns the Venue Yoga Studio and Pilates Studio, Marion Kong from the Millbrae Cultural Committee, Paul Larson, the owner of Chapel of the Highlands, Vivian Lee, owner of Sun Market, uh, Sinead Malkhorn, who is, uh, part-owner of Fiddler's Green, Bob Miller, owner of Bob's Handyman and Repair Service, Annie Oliva from O. Marshall Realty, Christina Ongrath, who is the owner of the Dillon Hotel, and Lance Sorensen, who is the owner of MQ Healthy Wraps. So we have a really nice new board of the Chamber that represents our, our Millbrae businesses. There's a meeting coming up at the Chamber, just to, to notify everyone. It's open to the public, Monday, July 29th at 6:00 PM at the Millbrae Recreation Center. And this new board will then, um, uh, vote for a new president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and also discuss, uh, their work plan moving forward. So that's Monday, uh, July 29th at the Recreation Center at 6:00 PM. Also, uh, we will be conducting routine traffic light maintenance beginning July 29th, which is next Monday, uh, through Thursday, August 1st, which is that Thursday. Um, maintenance will be done at the Millbrae El Comunal Real intersection and will be, be completed during the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. So it may result in some traffic delays, um, so just getting the word out to everyone to please plan accordingly. And again, if you have any questions, you, you can log on to the city's website into our Public Works page. Upcoming city events, uh, for August, we have many. Uh, starting Tuesday, August 6th, at 5:30 to 7:30, we have National Night Out hosted by the Sheriff's Department. So you can come celebrate, uh, National Night Out, uh, with the city and our Sheriff's Office and staff at Central Park. Um, and that starts at, at, uh, 5:30 and will end at 7:30. So it's always a great time, a lot of information, a great way to connect with your neighbors, connect with, uh, our deputies and, and the city. So National Night Out, Tuesday, August 6th, 5:30 to 7:30. Also, Tuesday, August 6th, at 10:00 AM, we have senior stories at the Millbrae Recreation Center in the Senior Lounge, um, free coffee, pastries, and storytelling. So this is a great program for the seniors. It's just continuing to, uh, gain a lot of popularity and, and, uh, um, success. Friday, August 9th, is Millbrae Goes to the Movies. It's our outdoor movie featuring the movie Element that starts at Central Park, and it starts at, uh, um, at right when it gets, starts to get dark. So around 8:15, uh, is when the show will start. So, um, we'll have, um, we encourage families to bring blankets and lawn chairs. Um, usually there's popcorn by, um, by our, um, by our city staff. Sometimes the Leos sell candy. Um, so it's a great event, uh, for movie night, August 9th, 8:15 PM at Central Park. Um, also, Tuesday, August 13th, uh, is the monthly senior lunch at the Millbrae Recreation Center. I've been attending a few of these, so, um, they're fantastic, uh, with the seniors. Um, there is a $5, uh, participation fee, but if people cannot, uh, afford that, that's fine. So everybody's welcome. Um, if you have your birthday the month of August and you're a senior, it's free. So that is at the Millbrae Recreation Center, 11:30 AM, August 13th. August 15th, 6:00 PM to 9:30 PM, is our, um, Millbrae Beats, Brews and Vines, our downtown summer concert series. Um, this is back on Broadway at the intersection of Broadway and Hillcrest. So, um, we have some great va, bands, um, D. Coco and Mix Company will be performing, and, uh, this starts at 6:00 PM. So everybody come out, support local businesses, hear some great music, and, and just have, uh, a great time. Also, then, uh, Saturday, August 17th, uh, is Millbrae Machines Car Show in downtown. Um, there's approximately 400, 420, um, cars. Um, this is hosted by the Lions Club in association with the city of Millbrae. And, uh, I know all of you have been out there, and it's just a terrific, uh, terrific, uh, car show put on by the Lions Club, and hope to get, uh, a lot of the community out to, to enjoy the day. And then lastly, Friday, August 23rd, is Bingo Night. We started bingo a few months ago. It's becoming very popular at the Recreation Center, so it's a lively night. Um, so if you're 18 and older, you have to be 18 or older according to, uh, state law, uh, uh, please join us for bingo at 6:30 PM, August 23rd, at the Rec Center. So Mayor, that's, uh, what's happening in the month of August, and, uh, we can move to the agenda. Um, there's only one item that we, uh, received a request from, and that's to move Item 18, which is the RWG, uh, City Attorney Contract, uh, to consent. So if the council would consider that.
All right, sounds good. Um, and we're moving on to, so we can decide on that, I think, uh, when the consent calendar is up?
Correct.
All right, perfect. So, um, thank you so much for the City Manager update. We don't have any approval minutes tonight, and we're moving right on to, uh, public communication. And this portion of the agenda is, is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item, not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of the City Council. Every speaker will have two minutes tonight. The speaker is to address directly to the entire council, not individual council member. We will first begin with in-person speakers and then followed by speakers online. I see we have three speakers online, and I get seven speaker slips. All right, we'll start with Mr. Dan Stajnik.
Thanks for hearing me tonight, councilmembers. All my comments are with regard to the June 26th, 2024 Bay Area Housing and Finance Authority meeting that occurred, of which you have a representative, Ms. Papin, on this board. I'm going to quote from Section 3 here. "Bafa hereby calls a bond election throughout the Bay Area 'such approval to constitute the approval required by Article 34 and authorization to issue the general obligation bonds contemplated therein.'" I'm going to quote that again. Section 3, "Bafa hereby calls a bond election throughout the Bay Area 'such approval to constitute the approval required by Article 34 and the authorization to issue the general obligation bonds complicate, uh, contemplated therein." Now, uh, last session I was here, and I, uh, I mentioned that, and there was some extensive clarification allowed by a, a council member there. Um, and I'd like to offer that same council member this clarification for. At that time, she stated, clarification for the record, this is Gina Papin, "Bafa Bond does not do away with Article 34." I need to be clear on that point. 80% of the funding will be given to the cities, and the cities will request that funding. Um, to be clear, the Bafa Bond is $20 billion of revenue, but it's $48.3 billion of general obligation debt. Less than 40% returns to the cities. The vast majority of that is investment dollars, bankers, lawyers, et cetera. And again, it's very clear that the Bafa Bond does completely override Article 34 in direct opposition to what Ms. Papin stated. And I'd like to give her the opportunity to respond to that. Thank you.
I just hope, hold on. So, oh, nope, 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 nope. No, 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 yeah. So I just want to be, no, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Stajnik. I just want to, uh, declare my intention tonight. Can we get that quiet down? Thank you. I thought the Miss Universe was up. Um, it is my, it is my intention tonight that we, it is my intention tonight that as we conclude public communication, that we go strict to consent calendar without recognizing any speakers after we finish the public speakers tonight. So, all right, no worries. All right, so in strict accordance to our protocol. Um, next speaker, Ms. Jean Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Fang, Vice Mayor Goodman, and councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Regardless of the recall outcome tonight-
Jean, Jean just kept closer to the mic. Thank you.
Okay. Regardless of the recall outcome tonight, it has changed Millbrae forever, and not necessarily for the better. A recall election is an effective tool to remove an elected official from office for fraud, criminal activities, malfeasance. But it seems that some citizens of Millbrae believe that a council member should be recalled for simply having a difference of opinion or perspective from them and for not any substantial derelict of duty. This does, this does not bode well for the stability of our future council. I do not know about others, but I want council members to have divergent ideas and perspectives. It is these differences that will generate discussions leading to the best solutions for the many problems and challenges facing Millbrae. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all council members for all that you do. Although I don't always agree with your positions, I do believe that you always act for the betterment of Millbrae. It is my wish that you be taking aggressive steps to help bring Millbrae together so that we again are a community united in our goals of social equity, inclusion, tolerance, and willingness to listen to all points of view. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Next up, Mr. Nathan Chen.
Good evening, uh, Millbrae City Council. I had hoped to use my time in public comments to, uh, recognize, um, uh, you know, and elevate some of the qualities that I look up to in councilmembers Cahillan and Vice Ma, Vice Mayor Goodman. But, uh, a friend of mine had, uh, interaction with a member of the City Council yesterday at Sematio County's Board of Supervisors meeting that I wanted to, that I wanted to elevate and, uh, talk to you all about. Uh, so I'm going to use her words now. Uh, I'm Jenny, a longtime Menlo Park renter and neighbor and recovering homeless teacher. Professionally, I represent business interests and work down the street from you on Bay Shore Highway. Your success as a strong city is in my interests. Simply said, local housing equals strong business and a strong resilient cities, city. I have the right to criticize Millbrae or any municipality that affects me, my family, the workforce, and business interests I represent. We are operating inside of a housing crisis, one that is deepening. Likewise, you should be able to criticize me and Menlo Park. These are upsetting times. Let's come together at, as neighbors to help our folks to be prof, professional and inspire our youth, like our disabled son, to support housing of all kinds. Bottom line, if you understand the housing crisis like I do, we need hundreds of thousands of new housing units in the Peninsula Bay Area. 99 units is a drop in that bucket. That's what I wanted to share from my friend Jenny tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chen. Mr. Ed Musa.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Um, I want to thank you for trying to get together a resolution for the ceasefire in Gaza. I know we've been trying to do meetings together. We have. We've done our part as far as reaching out to others that don't want it. And we're constantly going back and forth with them. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. We showed them a draft, and they were supposed to come back to us with a possible change to the draft after two or three days. Two weeks later- to the draft after two or three days. Two weeks later, nothing. Status quo, delay, 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 and someday it'll stop. We'll stop. We're not going to stop. We need something to happen. You have a lot of your constituents that are grieving. Many, many people are dying daily. Sixty people yesterday, eighty-nine today, 120 the day before. These are just numbers now. There's no faces. These are people that are constantly dying. I would appreciate that we someday soon put it on the agenda. This is something that you wanted us to do, get together, talk about it. We talked about it. They're not doing anything about it. Now it's up to you to hopefully do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musa. Next up, Jimmy.
Good evening, council members. I stand before you tonight with mixture of emotions. On one hand, I see the potential for positive change and community leadership. On the other, I see a troubling pattern of selective engagement. It has become painfully evident that this council tends to pick and choose the issues it addresses based on personal agendas rather than the true needs and desires of the community it represents. This selective attention is deeply troubling and undermines our confidence in our city's leadership. When our community is in pain, we expect our leaders to stand with us, to listen to us, and to act on our behalf. Sadly, in this critical moment, the leadership we desperately needed was absent. Let me reiterate our three basic humanitarian demands: an end to the violence, the release of hostages from both sides, and allowance of aid to flow to the starving people of Gaza. Yet you have failed to address them. We, the community, feel abandoned. We called for you, we called for your support, for your voice, and for your action, but so far our pleas have gone unheard. This is not just a failure of leadership. It is a betrayal of the trust we placed in you. Our community deserves better. We deserve leaders who are not afraid to stand up for justice, who prioritize the well-being of our people and act with the courage and compassion that true leaderships demand. It is time for this council to reflect on its purpose and to realign its actions with the values and needs of this community.
Thank you, Jimmy. We have Mr. Ron Raquel.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ron Raquel. Thank you for letting me speak a tired old topic, Millbury and Magnolia Avenue. Last year, I sent a video out to Andrews, and he, and actually a group message, email, and I had crickets. I actually showed video of me crossing Millbury Avenue, almost being hit. Andrews said, "Be vigilant, careful, obey all signs." But as we know, we live in an ADD society. I don't know what it's going to take for someone to die, and then we're going to have hollow and trite words and thoughts and prayers. Let's be proactive instead of reactive. There is, should be more time studies. I cannot believe that the current time study that you had showed there was more traffic in the northwest, least, actually, the east-west direction going north-south. If you go there during the morning or commute hours, the traffic is bad, and people trying to cross, kids, when school starts, you could have the sun in your eyes. People don't see pedestrians crossing. What is it going to take? And then you have people very anxious trying to get onto El Camino, onto 101. It would make the flow of traffic go a lot easier if you had a controlled light in both directions, and you wouldn't have people trying to run down pedestrians. I don't know what it's going to take. I've been on this for at least six years, and it has been nothing, absolutely nothing, and it's atrocious that you do not take my words and my emails seriously. I have yet to have someone reach out to me. It was a group email. What is it going to take? A fatality? Cars? And everything?
Thank you, Mr. Raquel. Your time is up. Okay. It's Gina Miranda, and then we'll go on to online speakers.
Hello. I'm Gina Miranda. I live in one of the districts that's affected by the recall. Thirty-plus years. Today, history is being made. We have our first-ever recall ever in the city of Millbury, and I hope it's the last. Millbury citizens have done a great job of electing decent leaders and voting those people in and keeping them in. But the recall system today, not just here, but all throughout the United States, is being abused. Folks, the two council members being targeted by this recall, they didn't do anything criminal. They didn't do anything unethical, grossly unethical, please. No, they didn't. In fact, when I see surveys of what Millbury residents prioritize, it's usually around affordable housing. And when I see, when I listen to my neighbors talking about the problems that we have in Millbury that we need to solve, the priority seems to be the unhoused folks. But yet, you know, let's be open to working on those solutions instead of allowing a few people to divide us with their fear tactics. Lastly, even if our leader, your district leader did make a mistake with something you don't like, are mistakes no longer allowed with our leadership? Going to make it pretty hard. We can't work together when we're abusing the recall system.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Miranda. City Clerk, please call on those online speaker who made it at the timeline as we stated.
If that's the case, then we only have one speaker online, which is Legia.
Okay. Please call on that speaker.
Legia, please accept a mute.
Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Goodman, council members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Legia Andrade Tullida. I'm a member of the public and a colleague of Councilmember Goodman and Councilmember Cowigan. I am extremely disappointed in the recent recall. These two council members are some of the most caring and active members of our community, always showing up to protect and defend folks that are forgotten, invisible or completely ignored, not only in Millbury but everywhere. Being that it's Disability Pride Month, as a person with a disability, they always find room for everyone. As a school board trustee, this recall is not only a waste of time, money, and resources, but it's also extremely divisive and a bad example for our young people. This recall shows that when you disagree with someone's position on whatever topic, you don't even give that person the common courtesy to have a conversation and see where it is that you do agree. It also encourages the inclusion of, exclusion of people that are different than us. The similarities we have as humans, as members of the community, is that we want the same things: safety, a place to call home, a place for our children to grow up, and our families to thrive. On the reason for the recall, it is because of the support of an initiative that would give people who have different lived experiences than some of us do a place to call home in Millbury. The folks that were going to be served by this project were families, seniors, and veterans who are just like us but have a different lived experience. I really hope that the people who are in favor of the recall don't forget that this is just history repeating itself, that at one point in time, Semathea County, in Semathea County, people of color, whether they were Latino, Black, Asian, they were not allowed to live in certain neighborhoods. There was redlining, gerrymandering, racism, and discrimination. The same thing that is happening today with this recall. I am honored to call both of these two council members.
Thank you. Okay. City Clerk, that concludes our public communication. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you so very much. Moving on to consent calendar, we have item number five, review and receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending June 30th, 2024. Item six, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending the replace and replacing Chapter 8.60, the tree protection and urban forestry program of Title VIII of the Millbury Municipality Municipal Co. Item seven, adoption of a resolution supporting the Spirit Trail Connectivity Project Phase One and authorizing the submission of an application to the Semathea County Transportation Authority for Cycle VII pedestrian and bicycle program, bicycle program funding, and authorizing the city manager or designated to execute a funding agreement or MOU and any amendments within the Semathea County Transportation Authority. Item eight, adoption of a resolution supporting the Safe Route Intersections Improvement Project and authorizing the submission of an application to the Semathea County Transportation Authority for Cycle VII pedestrian and bicycle program funding, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute a funding agreement or MOU and any amendment with the Semathea County Transportation Authority. Item number nine, adoption of a resolution accepting the drought-tolerant landscaping project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion. Item 10, adoption of a resolution. Number one, awarding a construction contract for the 2024 Water Pollution Control Plan Sludge Thickener and Digestor. Number two, rehabilitation project to W.N. Lyles Company. Second, awarding a construction inspection services to Bay Area Coating Consultant. Item three, establishing a 15% project contingency. Four, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute each contracts, and all contracts change order up to the total project budget. Item 11, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager and designated to execute an agreement between the Peninsula Clean Energy Authority and City Millbury for the Member Agency Energy Grant Program. Item 12, adoption of a resolution awarding a construction contract to later electric in the amount of $219,488 for the installations of electric vehicle charging station at Millbury Corporation Yard and authorizing a project contingency amount of $70,519.9. Item 13, adoption of a resolution authorizing collection of fiscal year 2024 to 25 stormwater on the Semathea County tax roll. And item 14, consider the appointment to the Youth Advisory Committee. And then we also are considering item number 18, adoption of a resolution approving the legal services agreement with the law firm of Richard Watson and Gershon, RWG, a professional corporation. Before anyone else makes a comment, I'd like to pull item number 14, and I shall recuse from voting on number, item 14, because a family member is involved. And I'll be in supportive of item number 18 being included in the consent calendar. Go ahead, Councilmember Ashneider.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to second bringing up Agenda Item 18 to consent calendar, but I have a question, a point of order question. Agenda item number eight, the second grant to Semathea Transportation Authority, Cycle VII, is the intersection of Magnolia and Millbury Avenue, and that is what one of the speakers was speaking on. I hope he will read that agenda item, or it should be pulled so that he could see. I'm not sure what the protocol is. It's what he wants to hear. We are moving. The city has been listening on Agenda Item Number Eight. So how do you want to, I don't know, what's the protocol? Typically, if somebody came up, we would say, well, you could pull it from the agenda, from consent.
So I pulled item number 14, and I included item number 18. So do we have a motion for 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 18?
So moved. I was the motion maker.
Okay.
But I just needed a point of order when a public member speaks on something. Typically, we'd say, that agenda item is coming up. But I think the way the title of Agenda Item Eight was, it wasn't obvious that it's Magnolia and Millbury Avenue.
Just because, okay, so there is the item intersection, but then there's also the specific requests from the speaker. But any case, we're not splitting here. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any public comment on these items? No? City Manager, do you have a comment before we take a vote?
I do not, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, very well. All right, so item 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 18. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Feng.
Aye.
Consent items number 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 18 passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Mr. Vice Mayor, would you please lead us on item number 14?
Item 14 is consideration of the appointment of the Youth Advisory Committee. Does anyone wish to, I would entertain a motion if anyone would like to make one. If not, I'll entertain some comments or questions.
I'd like to make a motion and just make one comment. I had the opportunity to be on the interview subcommittee for this, and I just can't say enough how incredible every applicant was. Such an intelligent, caring, compassionate group of youth committed to our city and to making a difference here in our community. Just, just a really wonderful group, and so grateful to be a part of that interview process and getting to be a part of working with the Youth Advisory Committee. One other thing I'll share is, one of the things we asked the applicants was issues that they care about in Millbury, and so many of them said the environment. So I don't know if there's ways to bring the youth even more involved in our city programs, but that really was a large component. So maybe something we can connect with and build on with all the successful program, environmental programs we have. So thank you to all the youth that applied, and congratulations to all of you that will be returning and joining the Youth Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
I'll second the motion. Comment?
You have a motion and second, or are there any comments?
I would only say, I know a number of the kids that are returning and coming back, and I couldn't be prouder of you. I didn't know. I'm sure we had a lot of kids to interview. Millbury does have lovely children, and anything I can do to help work on environment, we'll figure it out. So I'm glad to hear that that's what they care about. Makes me very happy and excited.
Any more comments? Are there any students available here today? Like to stand up and be acknowledged? Okay. Yes? And there's several online. All right. Thank you all. I'd like to personally just thank you all for encouraging yourselves and being encouraged to either continue or to put yourself out in the front and contribute to your community. It was a tremendous honor to speak with you all. I heard a lot of some of the challenges and opportunities that you created, and some of them we've talked about tonight, whether it's the e-bike safety and the environment, pedestrian safety. You definitely have a pulse, a good pulse on what the community needs, and so I commend you all, and thank you. With that being said, are there any comments from the public or online? Are there any?
There are no speaker slip and no hands raised.
All right. Thank you. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Item number 14 passed by a vote of 4 to 0 with Mayor Feng recused.
Okay. I will go ahead and read the names, or have the students already been notified that they have been recommended?
They have been notified, but if you want to recognize them.
Or could you please? Or could you please?
Give me a moment, please. The city council appointed Zareen Cheng, Madison Douglas, Hannah Lim, Shre Perk, um, Perk, um, Abigail Lim, Daniel De Lima, Anderson Fung, Kayan Chin, Derek De Lima, and also Caitlin Chung as the alternate to the Youth Advisory Committee.
And congratulate to all the youth members uh, and have a wonderful year and we're counting on you to be our future leader. It's, it's just wonderful to see, uh, that we have a bench. Um, as all of us continue to get a little older and then, uh, all the youth are stepping up to continue to lead this wonderful community. Thank you so very much for all of you. Um, existing business, uh, with item number fifteen, Millbury Homeless, Homelessness Engagement Local Program Quarterly Update. City Manager, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Assistant City Manager Isabel Carlos for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. Isabel Carlos, Assistant City Manager, Human Resources Director for the city. And the item before you is the quarterly update for the Millbury Homeless Engagement Local Program, also known as HELP. Yeah, so the, this, the presentation, the presentation for tonight is going to cover quarterly, um, updates. It's also going to cover overall program performance metrics and it's going to cover trends and data that is of interest for this program. With us tonight virtually, we have Mr. Marlin. Last name, Marlin Mendieta. He's a program director for the homeless outreach team for Life Moves and he's going to conduct, uh, the presentation and then I'll come back up to wrap, wrap up the presentation. With that, um, I'll give, uh, Mr. Mendieta the floor.
Thank you, Isabel, for that introduction. Um, so it's, I'm really happy to talk about this program today. Um, out of all the outreach programs, I think there's, there's some unique features to this. Um, the homeless engagement local program that serves, um, Millbury. So I'll be happy to highlight those as we go along. Um, can I get the next slide, please? Thank you. So for the program overview, um, one of the main features that distinguishes this team is that they work after hours, meaning, um, in the evenings and overnight. Um, and we found that to be a really, really useful feature of this as we get into the demographics and other aspects. I'll highlight that again. Um, the program was intended to last from January 2023 through June 2024. Isabel will have updates on that at the end of the presentation. We serve singles, couples, and families experiencing homelessness. The focus is the Millbury Bart Station, the surrounding areas and downtown area as well. It's funded by the city of Millbury and also by the county of San Mateos, working together to end homelessness innovation grant program. Um, next slide, please. So our staff for this program is two full-time case managers. As you can see, their, their schedule is from 12:30 PM to 11:30 PM on Tuesdays. Wednesdays through Friday, they are out there from 3:30 PM to 30, 2:30 AM. The goal here is to connect with people, um, who are catching the last bus or the last bar train or somehow end up at the bar station at, at a late time. Engage with them on, on basic conversational level, address the basic needs and whenever possible, connect them with services if they're available. Next slide, please. Our metrics for the, for, um, the period of January 2023 through 2024, uh, we have set a goal of, um, 150 outreach and engagement services, what we call a light touch engagement. Could be like a one-time connection or, um, very like simple transactional type connection. The goal was 150. We connected with 154 people. The unduplicated individuals receiving case management services, this is an important one. We set a goal of 36 and we met with 83 people and this is ongoing case management services. That's the best way to describe it. More than one meeting, a lot, much deeper level of services. Um, placements into temporary housing, which could also include temporary shelter. The goal was 45. They placed 220, 227 people. Of that, it's 133 unduplicated individuals connected into temporary situations. Finally, the metric of placements into permanent housing. The goal was five, we placed five. Next slide, please. This demographic data comes from the most recent quarter, April through June. Um, there's 21 households or individuals that were surveyed for this. Um, the, the main things to point out here is the higher, um, um, the more frequent conditions found here is chronic health conditions, mental health conditions, and also substance use conditions. Um, and so our staff during their late hours try their best to engage in conversations about how to address those barriers and do follow-up appointments to try to connect them with services the following days. Next slide, please. Uh, again, this is from, from the most recent quarter. Um, but the trend holds up when you look at, um, a bigger set of data as well. Um, the age range of 25 through six, through 54, um, those three categories are the most common ones for the people that are being engaged at the Millbury Bart Station. So it, it leans toward like, um, a little bit more younger to middle age. Um, in the past, we've been asked how that compares with Life Moves as a whole. Life Moves in general does see a trend toward, um, older or aging, um, clients, but that's, it's a little bit different for the Millbury dataset. Um, in terms of race, we do see that white is a common, one of the most self-identified categories is white, followed by 5% that identifies as Black or African American. For ethnicity, we see 29% identify as Hispanic, Latino, or Latinx. Um, and 24% non-Hispanic, non-Latinx, and 47% of both of those in race and ethnicity did not respond. Um, but that gives you a pretty good, um, insight into, into who they're serving at those times. Next slide, please. Okay, for this one, I think it's important to highlight that as much as we focus on the Bart Station, that doesn't mean everybody arrives through Bart. But 15%, 15 people did respond on our surveys, um, that arrived by Bart. So it's still a significant feature. It's still a significant, significant detail that many people do arrive by Barts, but they get there by many different means. Um, at the last quarterly presentation, we, we did explain that the Millbury Bart Station serves as a hub for other forms of transportation and for people just passing through, trying to figure out what their next step is going to be. Um, for, for the question of how long have you been experiencing homelessness on the survey? The majority of people responded three-plus years. 28 respondents out of 81, um, on this survey. So that's a very significant, significant detail there. Um, and then the next one is one to three years. 21 people responded that. So we are looking at people that have been experiencing homelessness for a while. Um, there are a few that are, you know, less than a year, but I will say by far, um, one to three years, three-plus years is a very defining factor for this community. Um, next slide, please. Next slide, please. All right, so on this one, the question of where will you be sleeping tonight? 51 people identified emergency shelter. Um, and just to give you some context for these surveys that are conducted, um, often at late night, it's when they are engaging with our staff to possibly receive a shelter bed. So that's going to be something that, it's not a surprise that many people identify as shelter as where they will be sleeping that night because that's the connection that's happening at the time. More importantly though, where do you usually sleep? The same respondents, 40 people out of that group responded they would normally stay outside or on shelter. So I think it's, the way that I read that is if, if we weren't providing shelter at that time, 40 of them would have been possibly staying out in the street. So I think there's a connection between those two data points. Uh, we'll go on to the next one, please. Okay, um, so in terms of factors affecting the ability to give services, um, shelter capacity is always a factor. Um, the lack of housing vouchers and subsidies for the clients that we're working with and, and as, as well as just overall demand for services, um, especially given the schedule, um, that, that they're working with. Um, going on to the next slide, please. Okay, um, our staff, well, consulting with our staff, they would like to see more access to on-demand services like, um, AOD programs for recovery. Um, some local programs have closed or have changed and that's always a challenge. Um, we already refer people to street medicine as well as to the Heal program. Um, they do seek more collaboration with daytime staff. So within our own programs, we try to provide support from other daytime staff to help the Millbury team connect with their, with their clients with services. Uh, but it would be great if, um, we're going to continue to work with them to make more connections with other programs that could help them with their clients, expand their network of services. Um, and then finally, just emphasizing again, uh, longer-term solutions would be great. Longer-term shelter stays that are accessible to the staff at that time of night. Um, additional motel programs, um, or even overnight shelter beds on demand would be, additional beds that they could access for one night at a time would be helpful for them and their clients. Next slide, please. So, um, I'm happy to share some successes with you. Um, the team is really good about working with the local police department as well with the Bart Crisis Intervention Team to discuss, to discuss high-needs clients that are in the area. Um, they maintain good relationships with shelter staff so they can make referrals for emergency beds at night. Um, and we have two success stories here. One of them is a, a client that was placed at the Life Moves Navigation Center in Redwood City. Um, despite her having a challenging experience at that program before because of her, um, where she was at at the time, um, she was able to remain in compliance this time until she was accepted into a recovery program. So we're happy about that. Um, and then we also had a client that moved into housing. Um, he was at the navigation center after our staff, um, was able to get him a, a, a shelter bed at the navigation center. Everything lined up for him to move into housing. Uh, we helped him with identified move-in cost support and he moved in on July 3rd, just in time to enjoy the Fourth of July in the comfort of his new apartment. So we felt really good about getting them, getting him to there just in time and such as a meaningful holiday for him. Um, and that, I think, just, you know, again, all the transactions involved into helping somebody get into housing, the paperwork connecting with service providers for, for move-in costs, all that happens while they're still working at night and then trying to connect with daytime staff to make, to line up everything for him to get into, into his home. So we felt really good about that last one. For the rest of the presentation, Isabel will finish off the last, the last line. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mendieta. Yes, so as you know, um, the city has been operating this program initially starting as a pilot program and then as a more formal program since 2021. The latest cycle provided operational funding until June 30 of, uh, 2024. And as you saw from the presentation, we met and exceeded all the performance goals that were established at the onset of the program. Um, but this year, rather than funding programs such as HELP, the County of San Mateo announced that they would be moving towards a regional homeless outreach and services program beginning January of, uh, 2025. And so, uh, the city council directed staff in an earlier council meeting to secure funding to bridge program services for the unhoused, at least until the county could establish their, uh, countywide program. And with this support of, uh, council members and also the city manager who reached out to county supervisor Dave Pine, Supervisor Pine agreed to recommend $150,000 of Measure K discretionary funds to continue HELP services until the end of 2024. Uh, this recommendation was, uh, approved by the Board of Supervisors on June 25th of 2024 and consequently, HELP services will continue, uh, in, in operation until December 31st of 2024. The services under the extended program, um, are going to continue to be provided, uh, by Life Moves and they will be administered directly by, by the county of, of San Mateo. Um, that is an update on, uh, the, the program itself. And with that, we'll conclude the presentation and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Isabel Carlos. Um, let me just stop by saying, um, all the great work, um, that Life Move has done. I wanted to give a special shout out and thank to Supervisor Pine, uh, in helping us to bridge, um, the funding gap at the moment. If you can just kind of go back, I think a few slides that talks about some of the statistics of, uh, the folks that we were able to help, you know, with all the four circles, yeah. I mean, look, look at these data. I mean, it shows how City of Millbury is truly a city of passion and also a city of compassion. That we're here to help anyone and everyone who happened to be in our city and needed an assistance. Um, you know, we've connected over 150 people, you know, with outreach and engagement services. We've connected over 36 individuals, uh, unduplicated individuals and receiving case management, 45 of which were placed into some sort of a temporary housing and six of them, not five, in my understanding, six of which were connected to permanent housing. And so those are the level of, of assistance and the success that this program has been able to produce. And it's, it's all these folks who otherwise would still be unhoused and, and living in a tent on Al Camino Real or, or somewhere else. So, you know, it, it just demonstrates how important this program is, how successful it has been and how important it is to continue to keep these success going, uh, in the city of Millbury. And I urge the supervisors, uh, to reconsider, uh, their funding priorities so that this success can continue uh, in the name of helping those who needed it the most. So with that, um, I'd like to open up some of the councilmember comp.
Just real quick, so the numbers that you, that you read out, those are the, the performance goals, but the, um, accomplishments are actually at the bottom.
Oh, 150, oh, yeah, these are even more, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we exceeded these goals. Way exceeded, I mean, look at 154, uh, um, unduplicated individuals receiving outreach, 83 of which, uh, receiving case management, 227 of which, 500% exceeding our goal, receiving a placement into temporary housing. Uh, uh, it's, it's my understanding, it's six individuals who get permanent housing, not five.
Correct.
Yeah, so, you know, it, it's just, I said it before and I say it again, how successful this program has been and how important this program continues to be, uh, in helping those who needed it the most. So with that said, um, Councilman Pappan and then Councilmember, um, Ash Schneider and then after that, uh, Councilmember Cahalan. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Marlin, to you and your staff very much. So thank you to the prior council and this council for really stepping up and, um, getting some real results here. We greatly appreciate everything you've done. I had a question, you mentioned the Bart intervention. How much contact do you actually have with the Bart staff? And are the, how helpful are they, if at all?
I, I think, we, the way I look at it, like, um, it's really the case managers that are out there that engage with them as needed. Um, I really don't have a sense of how often they communicate with them, but I've not heard them say, have any complaints about that. I think it's, it's all positive from the way I look at it. We're all out there to try to help somebody. So I think our case managers are just doing their best for whoever's willing to work with them. But I have not heard any complaints about that, honestly.
Well, your case managers are amazing. We do know that. Um, yeah, if you could just let us know as a side note, because Bart is going through major issues here. So we'd like to know how much you can rely on them and what is actually happening in our region. That would be very, very helpful. Thank you. Uh, two, I have always heard and do believe here because Bart closes down the facilities. Are there any other facilities in the area for people to use? Or would it be helpful to somehow have facilities there available? Because it's still, having been there recently, there's still a large, uh, fragrance of urine, uh, in certain areas of the station. So, um, feedback from your staff would be helpful to us.
I'll make sure to ask them about that. Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great because we are talking about trying to get some retail in there to improve the customer experience. So thank you very, very much for all you do. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Pappan, just to also add to that, um, uh, so we've been in communication with the Bart staff in the past and even so recently, where we've asked for collaboration and financial support. And we put the request out there. They said they were going to take it to, to their superiors, but we, we haven't heard back.
superiors, but we haven't heard back. We planned for another meeting, I think, in a few months, so we can report back if there's going to be some financial support or some more collaboration on this program.
If I could ask for an expedition on that process, they've been known not to really follow through, and so if we could assist in that happening, it would be helpful all around. Yeah, I mean, we are trying to help everybody here, and so I know that's been very, very difficult, so please, if you could, and
Stay on it.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Schneider, and then followed by Councilmember Kay Haley.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Mr. Mendieta, I can't remember if I mentioned this at a previous council meeting, but now that I'm on the Homeless Subcommittee, I believe we had a meeting together and you shared stories, and the education there is just the sheer number of contacts that are needed in this and what makes this program pretty amazing. And I'm wondering now that the county is shifting toward hot teams, and I believe we had a discussion with the county executive on this, with the county showing data that disagrees or is different than our data, how we're moving in terms of that data. And I am, I am thinking that we need perhaps Mr. Sam Springer to come in and tell our story on this, tell the story of how the contact, the project at the BART station is successful, not necessarily to compare it to hot teams, but perhaps to ultimately get the reporters out there to look at the difference between a hot team contact and the kind of work that Life Move is doing for the city here in Millbrae, that we better tell our story on that, because we're going to have to, we're going to need long-term funding for this. Whereas I appreciate Supervisor Pine using some of his discretionary Measure K funds, this problem is not going to go away in January 1st on that. So I was just so amazed, and you shared stories of the people and their different experiences, your slides tell a little bit more about where they're, you know, were they domestic abuse, were they mental health, were they people of disabilities, a subject that has been on the news a lot the last couple of days on there. And as somebody with a permanent disability, I can definitely understand how quickly that can lead to insolvency on that. So I really think we need to tell our story on that. And again, I'm thankful for this, I am disappointed in the county's use of Measure K, and we'll probably be diving into how Measure K funds are spent and how they are spread throughout the county to make sure that Millbrae gets our fair share, because Measure K funds are funds that all of us pay into. But thank you, Mr. Mendieta, and thank you.
Councilmember Kay Haley.
Thank you so much for the update, and I just wanted to speak to two issues. One, I know that the county's plan is to revamp their homeless outreach team, it sounds like going live in January 2025, and they're doing that by contracting with Life Moves and other organizations as much as possible in that program design, as much as Life Moves has a seat at the table, as council members and city staff can get a seat at the table to advocate for these unique features you talked about tonight that our program has and leads to that success from a proactive versus reactive model, the hours, all of those things, and letting us know how we can help advocate and support Life Moves with that, so we can, you know, expand this model and bring greater success with this across the county. Also, thank you for sharing the slides around where you see the gaps and the challenges. I think it's really helpful to see that as someone who's been in social services for over two decades. Unfortunately, those have been the key gaps as long as I've been in the field, but it helps us have the information we need, especially at the county level where these resources are provided and funded, to help advocate and bridge those gaps. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for all your comment. Any other comment? I think we have one speaker online, let's go ahead and take a public comment.
Grace X, please accept the mute.
Yes, hello. Anders gave a perfect example of what I want to talk to about and the lack of being informed about the Life Moves program. At the presentation last fall, Anders misinterpreted the PowerPoint presentation, just like he did tonight, and claimed that Life Moves is very successful in housing people. Then, Councilmember Burlingame Brownrigged cites upon his statement to claim, if you have successfully housed 415 people in 18 months, that's one and a half people a day. Kudos to the City of Millbrae, which was printed in the San Mateo Daily Journal. But this is misinformation, despite reaching out to the City of Burlingame, Millbrae, and Life Moves, no one corrected their statement. The data presented by Life Moves at these updates lacks the transparency necessary to have a meaningful discussion about homelessness, and the presentation seems to be more self-serving than helpful, as reaffirmed by the fact that they did not bother to correct the misinformation in Daily Journal article, except for Sarah Fields of Life Moves making sure that her title was corrected in the article. As an example of misleading the public is Attachment A. At the top, it states, Millbrae year-to-date performance data. However, the data provided below the header is for 18 months, not six months. Another illustration is the performance metrics and goals set by Life Moves, which appear to be arbitrary, meaningless, and pulled out of thin air. So for example, that Life Move claims outperformed its metric for placement into temporary housing by 504% is just self-serving, aggrandizing nonsense. Rather, if you compare the 227 placement number to the number provided a quarter ago at the last update, which was 178, this translates to only 49 temporary placements in the last 90 days. And as Life Moves footnote shows, that number may include duplicate individual. That's approximately one person every other day is placed in a bed for a night at a shelter or other facility. Moreover, the statistics on disabilities do not provide a comprehensive picture when you factor in the self-reporting numbers of substance use disorders do not accurately reflect the true extent of the problem, because many users do not acknowledge they have a problem, and many physical and mental health issues are created by drug use. The city residency data presented in the bar chart lacks clarity on what constitutes residency. It is essential to differentiate between recent arrivals and long-term residents, as this distinction provides more meaningful insight. The Life Moves PowerPoint states that two individuals identified in Millbrae as are place of residence. However, this lacks the context unless we know how long these individuals have been in Millbrae. Thank you for your time.
All right, City Clerk, anybody else?
There are no additional hands raised.
Thank you so much, closing public comment, Councilmember Anne Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I heard everything correctly. I think where Millbrae is unique is that we do handle people from so many different places, and it's not a function of how many people of Millbrae we're helping, it's how many people from the region we are helping. And I might have misheard what Ms. Arab said on that. So just to make that clear, we are covering, we're helping people from all over the Bay Area on that, and we have to, because we're an end-of-the-line BART station, and BART, because San Mateo County residents did not vote for BART back in the early 1960s, BART does not consider us an equal team player, so they don't provide the same services to Millbrae that they do for the end-of-the-line BART stations in any other county in the Bay Area. So we are unique, we are absolutely unique, and again, I'm grateful for the program.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Unless there's any other comment, I'll take a motion to accept and receive this Millbrae Homelessness Engagement Local Program Quarterly Update Report.
Let's move.
Okay, all right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan.
Yes.
Councilmember Kay Haley.
Aye.
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 15 passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number 16, adoption of a resolution approving the final map for residential and commercial condominium purposes, 2024-01, and an improvement agreement for a 278-unit mixed-use development at 959 El Camino Real. I'm excited about this item. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our city engineer and CIP manager, you've met him once before, but Mr. Ahmed Haye for the staff presentation.
All right, tell us more about housing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Ahmad Haye, I'm the city engineer and CIP manager. I'm here to present the final map and the improvement agreement associated with the development project at 959 El Camino Real. We'll start with a brief project background, talk about the two items, the final map and the improvement agreement, and I'll conclude with the staff recommendation, and then there'll be an opportunity for questions at the very end. Back on June 29, 2022, the Planning Commission approved a mixed-use development on El Camino Real. It includes 278 residential units and over 17,000 square feet of commercial space. We're now at the final step of the development project. Developer Trammell Crowe has submitted a final map for condominium purposes. The city has checked for technical accuracy and compliance with our ordinances. On July 15th, this was last week, the Planning Commission found the map to be in substantial performance and recommends approval by the city council. Developer must execute an improvement agreement detailing all public improvements to be constructed in the public right of way. The public improvements include sewer and water lines, sidewalks, curbs and gutters, and street trees along Broadway, Meadow Glen Avenue, and El Camino Real. City received from the developer a performance bond in the amount of $2,228,600 to guarantee the construction of the public improvements in the right of way. All these items being complete, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution approving the final map for residential and commercial condominium purposes and the improvement agreement for the public improvements required for the 278-unit mixed-unit development project.
All right, thank you for the presentation. I believe this is all already went through the Planning Commission and they get it all approved upon. Thank you so much. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Pappan, okay, followed by Councilmember Anne Schneider.
It's beautiful to see this project. Do we have an estimated completion date? I know I jump ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, yes. So the update on that is working with the developer. They have secured 100% of their financing, and they plan on demolition commencing in late September or October, and completion will probably be around a two-year construction timeline.
Okay, one of the reasons why Millbrae is the fastest-growing city, or percentage city-wise, in San Mateo County, fifth largest in the region, and 10th in the state, so we are doing quite well here, glad to see this. What is the affordability number on these units?
There are 26 units.
Percentage?
That's 10%, actually, just less of 10%.
Okay, we had discussed, and I'll just throw this in, increasing our affordability to 20%? I don't know where that is in the plans, but I'll just bring it up again. It would be great to see that as these units progress in our city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add on to that, to the councilmember's comments, so the developer implemented a state law known as SB 330 that only requires actually 5% affordability, so that overridden the city's ordinance that requires a 15% inclusionary housing requirement. So by implementing the SB 330, there's actually 5% less affordable units than our local ordinance that requires a 15% minimum inclusionary housing. Before your comment, I hear you about bringing back 5%. Harrison Associates, our housing element and housing consultant, is working on that analysis as well as our local density bonus ordinance, will be brought back to the city council within the next several months.
Great, and we should probably try to update the legislature on what their laws are doing to our efforts to provide affordable, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Hopefully, they'll start listening.
Councilmember Anne Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Yay, happy, I read the Planning Commission meeting. I have one really dumb question, what to call the building? Because I call it the Office Depot site, and I believe that the developers are calling it One Meadow Glen, but today's staff report talked about El Camino Real. So just when I'm talking to the public, I love to say, I love the building, I love the arches, I love our new square, I'm not even going to ask for the trees to be saved in the parking lot, because we already learned how expensive that is to remove, and those trees really aren't that worth it. But can we stick to a name and make sure we call it, make sure I'm using the right name? Is it One Meadow Glen?
I'll look to our planning manager real quick to confirm that.
Hey, Council, Frascamato Planning Manager, yeah, the developer has indicated their intent to brand the development One Meadow Glen.
Okay, great, thank you, I couldn't be happier.
Happy to make a motion when you're ready.
I don't have any public comment, speaker slip, we don't have anybody online, seems like.
I do not have any speaker slip on this item, and there's no hands raised online.
All right, so closing public comment, go ahead.
I'm sorry, one other comment, then I'm happy to make a motion. If they're doing the demo, I can't remember, do we have a, like, an event when the demolition starts, or do we only do that when we're breaking ground for new construction? I just want to see that building demoed.
It's really up to the developer if they want to do that or not, so we'll reach out to them and
I would love to So I think a lot of people, and those of us grew up with the old QFI market, it is past its time, it's so great coming back to the new building.
I recommend calling it Councilmember, the old Office Depot site, everybody knows that.
Yeah, I'm scrackling. All right, thank you. A motion to adopt the resolution approving the final map for residential and commercial condominium purposes, number 2024-01, and an improvement agreement for 278-unit mixed-use development at 959 El Camino Real slash Office Depot or One Meadow Glen.
All right, thank you for the motion. Any seconds? Second from Councilmember Gina Pappan. Any further comments? City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan.
Yes.
Councilmember Kay Haley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Item number 16 passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you so very much, and thank you all of you. Just a quick announcement, we'd like to see everybody, you know, engaging in our council chambers, certainly we'd love to see everybody, all the public, but just please make sure you mute your mobile devices so that we can continue to focus on the agenda. Item number 17, consider amending the term limit measure resolution for the November 5, 2024 general municipality election. City Manager, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. We have a staff presentation, if you need it, the City Clerk, but this is an item that the city council considered at the last meeting, and this is to put a measure on the November 5 ballot to extend the term limits from two terms to four terms. As I understand it, some of you, especially the mayor in discussions with you, and also my office, has received feedback from the community that there would be support for a three consecutive terms, perhaps not support for four consecutive terms. So with that, and at your request, this item was placed on this agenda for consideration from the language on the ballot in November, from two terms to three terms, or maintain the two terms to four terms. So at the pleasure of the city council, I'd be happy to answer any questions, move on with the discussion.
And I believe we received the public communication from former mayor Dankwit in an email, if you can just have it enter into the record.
Yes, I want to notate that we did receive a public communication that was emailed to the full council today in regards to this item, and this will be notated as a public record.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Did you have a hand raised, Councilmember Anne Schneider?
I think I kicked this off two weeks ago. I think I would rather see it pass at three than to fight for four, so I'm happy to support three terms.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Pappan.
Do you have the one slide showing which cities actually have term limits and which don't?
Yes, we will be bringing that up.
So 14 cities do not have any term limits.
That is correct.
Out of 20. Okay, yeah, just to comment here, you know, the reason we're bringing this up altogether here is that, first off, it's very difficult to get people to run for office, and in addition to that, I think we've shown that Millbrae has greater opportunities regionally speaking. speaking, the longer somebody serves on the council. So term limits, especially these ones that are just two here, it does make it very difficult for the cities. And I think, you know, looking at 14 cities out of 20 do not have any term limits. I mean, I could go with either here. The point being is for the best representation for the city, I think that's what we're trying to get to here. So, you know, if you think it's going to pass with three, that's fine. But again, term limits exist each and every day. So I could go with either one, but just for the public's sake. This is why we are trying to get their view on this and try to increase it at this point. And it does not benefit anyone up here. Does not apply to the current council. So just want to be clear on all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pappin. Any further comment? Hold on one second. Ms. Cahalan, do you have anything?
I do.
Oh, okay. All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I just want to say on the whole term limit thing, I think we can't continue to get caught up in victimizing ourselves and problems that we create. You know, we can't say, you know, no one wants to run, but we create environments where no one wants to run. If our council is to do better, our individual council members have to do better. And we all have a role to play when it comes to representing the city, representing this team that's here. I do believe, you know, three terms is enough if we are going to take it to the voters. But we also should have faith in our community to make sure that they are able to be represented and they're able to see themselves up here regardless. And as I said at our last meeting, it's not about pushing fear, uncertainty and doubt in order to get this passed. It's a matter of saying, hey, we believe in our community. We believe in our individuals, just like we believed in our young people that are applying for our youth advisory committee. Those individuals represent parents. Those individuals, when we talked to them, said their greatest inspiration are their parents. Those individuals are individuals we hope to see here. And so we have to make sure that we show our community that we believe in them to be able to represent themselves up here. So let's try to focus on the goodness and opportunity for representation rather than what hasn't happened in the past or what might not happen. That's my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Let me go to Councilmember Cahalan, and then we'll come back to you on a second time.
I just, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I think this would be more amenable to our voters. So I'm glad to see it come back as three. And I echo those comments. I think as leaders, how we work as a council, how we lead in the community is going to be how we build relationships, how we do better, how we encourage more and new people to run for office and to make it on committees. So I think it's important to extend our term limits just by one term, but also to look at the bigger picture and the role and the responsibilities and expectations of council members in meeting those goals, not just in our term limits to meet those goals. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to go back to Councilman Pappin, I actually started doing a little bit of research of cities that don't have term limits and how often their city councils are turning over. And I haven't been able to do a deep dive in the analysis, but those cities are actually turning over pretty quickly nowadays. And I was part of the whole movement back in the late 20th century of looking at term limits. And I think we're in a different world now, and I think it'll be for a future city council. But given the current makeup, going to three, I'd rather have a win than have to send that next city council back to the drawing board on that, hence the three on that. But I do believe that term limits don't make sense in the current day of, even if you just look, if you do an analysis of the 20 cities in San Mateo County and the turnover in them, there's a couple of people that have been around for a very, very long time. But generally, they're turning over much more quickly now. It's hard work, everybody. It is hard work. And you get beaten up a lot. And it's, there can be just horrible days, there can be some lovely days. So I agree that we need to encourage people to run. Thank you.
I would say that it's a privilege to be here. And so, you know, I'm grateful to be able to sit in this chair and do the work that I do for all of you. And if that means to be three terms or whatever that term is, I'm just grateful to be here. So with that said, we got a motion from Councilmember Anne Schneider. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Vice Mayor. Any further comment? I already asked for public comment, and there's no speaker slips, nor any hand raised. Correct?
No speaker slip and no hands raised on that.
Confirmed. Any final comments? City Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin. Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Item number 17 passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on. And item number 18 has already been done. Item number 19, discuss and consider ordering the submission of a measure on Article 34 of the California Constitution for the November 5, 2024 general municipal election and setting priorities for filings. Mr. City Manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager, are you ready? All right. This item may seem overly complex and confusing, but it isn't. It is simply about due process, local control, and people's right to vote. So as I opened the briefing, I want to preface this by saying that the city of Millbrae has received a lot of what I'll call unnecessary and hostile behavior from some people regarding the city's position to uphold Article 34 of the state constitution and people's right to vote as required by Article 34 of the constitution. Until yesterday, the county board of supervisors, county manager and county attorney disagreed with our validation claim to bring the La Quinta Hotel purchase proposed by the county to acquire the property and act as a developer, as a public developer and contractor for the conversion of the hotel to permanent supportive housing of the voters. So yesterday, with really less than one workday's notice by the county, two cities, it now seems the county agrees with Millbrae's position as they quietly and hastily held a special meeting to place a generic Article 34 question to voters as they term in all incorporated, which is the county, and incorporated cities, incorporated areas, which are the municipalities within the city, throughout the county on the November 5 ballot. So although we do appreciate the county acknowledging that the city of Millbrae seemed to be correct with their validation claim, the way the county is proceeding with the hearing yesterday, and they continued it actually to August 6th, I'll get to that in a minute, has many issues and is riddled with problems. And I've had the opportunity to talk to several city managers throughout the county, and we all feel the same way. The county never presented what they were proposing to any city councils within the county. They had acknowledged that other counties have done the same thing. We did research, County of Sacramento, for example, in 2022, did the same county-wide initiative. And I looked at the wording that the county's using, and it's almost verbatim with what Sacramento County did. But the difference is Sacramento County went to each municipality and asked for a resolution to be adopted to allow the item to be placed on the agenda within their municipality. And so there's a little bit of difference, and that's not what's happening right now with the county's proposal here in San Mateo County. I'd like to note that, as was mentioned earlier, that Millbrae is the fastest-growing city in San Mateo County in 2023, per the state of California's figures. The production of housing and affordable housing, we also are one of the few cities that has an adopted housing element that's been certified by the state of California. And a lot's been said with what the issue is with La Quinta. Millbrae's not opposed to housing and certainly understands the need for affordable housing and taking care of the unhoused. This has been proven by our ongoing Life Moves partnership that we just heard about with social workers at the BART station and our $2.88 million contribution of the core companies for the 80 low-income housing units on the east side of the BART station. So tonight, also, the council approved, as was acknowledged, the 275 multifamily housing project with 10% affordable from the state of California, which we have 15% here locally. So we would like to have that 5% more in our housing units. That we are, we are doing our job. We are producing housing. We are acknowledging the issues with the homeless and the unhoused. So with this, why am I bringing this forward to the City Council? Well, as you may recall, the city did contemplate putting the Article 34 question of La Quinta to the Millbrae voters, actually, in today's special election. But the election code does not allow any other item to be placed on the recall ballot. So this item isn't a new conversation here at this city. But the other reason is that the county manager, Mr. Calagie, notified cities this past Friday that he was having the special meeting of the board of supervisors to consider placing an Article 34 item on the ballot November 5 in all unincorporated, which is county lands, and incorporated, which is municipal boundaries. Because this happened so quickly and without notice, we've not had sufficient time to analyze the plan proposed by the county. And quite frankly, we don't even know if it's legal. The draft wording is very generic. It's vague and does not identify a specific project nor a specific funding source. So just a generic vote to give the county, in essence, an open checkbook seems to be a problem within municipal boundaries. So for example, if all governmental agencies, which is proposed right now with the county's language, and if it is approved countywide, that would mean, for example, the school district could come in and build a homeless shelter on the baseball field, the vacant baseball field. It would mean that SFPUC could come in and, at the outdoor supply hardware site, build a homeless shelter without any action by you as a city council or without any public hearing or say by the municipality. So there's process, and I mentioned, you know, due process and a process under which most projects are approved. So that just gives you an example. So the county never came to the city to seek a resolution as Sacramento County did within their municipal jurisdictions or discuss a partnership or placing an Article 34 question on the ballot. So we're recommending that the City Council place an Article 34 question to the voters within the city of Millbrae's jurisdictional authority, within our incorporated boundaries. So by placing the local ballot measure for the voters of Millbrae, they will have the opportunity to vote and weigh in on the question of a public agency. And this is what Article 34 is all about. It's not every housing project, and it's not if a city partners or provides funding to a nonprofit or to a for-profit builder for housing. It's only when the governmental agency puts their developer hat on and, you know, competes with the Schornsteins or the Mid Peninsula Housing Authority. So there's a big difference, and I think that's important. That's a subtle element to this law. So it's only when the public agency acts as the developer. So again, the question City Council has raised in the past and the underlying reason for the validation claim that was submitted to courts, we know that the courts have not determined the validity of Article 34. So as Judge Feynman here in San Mateo County opined that Millbrae, the question is not ripe yet. And it isn't ripe because the county has not secured funding through their funding source and their application to Home Key. So I'll mention in closing that the judge did issue her final decision today. So the 30-day clock for appeal starts today. The city will be appealing Judge Feynman's decision, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have. Oh, I may also add that the hearing yesterday at the county was continued to August 6th with a direction for county manager Calagie to reach out to local municipalities to get feedback. So with that, there's a lot of information in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions or open up for discussion.
Let me start with the City Manager, and then, trust me, I'll be sure to give ample time for every council member and the public to weigh in on this issue. This is a very important issue. I also participated and sat through the board of supervisors' hearing. They did mention that they have created a subcommittee to analyze and finalize the language at which they will propose to put on the ballot. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then they also continue this item until August 6, correct? You mentioned it a moment ago. Okay.
And Mayor, if I may, so supervisor Mueller and Corzo are the two that were selected to be on the subcommittee.
Right. I think this is such an important issue that we have to get, we have to allow us to have the opportunity and the time to get as much public input as it possibly can. I think it's important for us to have the public to have an opportunity to weigh in on this issue. We're going to need to do a sizable, meaningful, public outreach here before we come to a conclusion to this. So I would say, you know, we definitely need more time, and we need to find a way to outreach the community and maybe even do some polling as to how the community feels about it. I mean, if the term limit was already an exercise that, you know, teaches a lesson, you know, I think it's important for us to reach out to the community, get their input, and have everybody's, give everybody an opportunity to weigh in on this issue before we come to a conclusion to this.
But, okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I hope this is helpful. This proposal is to put something on our local municipal ballot, right?
Correct.
So you, as the governing body, the elected body of a municipality, you have rights. And the question is, within the jurisdictional authority, you have a choice as to what direction you want to and not follow a county. The county does not have any authority over a city council. County board of supervisors are the city council for the unincorporated area in situations like this.
Yep. Fully understand. All right. So I'm going to open up. Councilmember Pappin, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I think real quick what the mayor is saying is that whatever we present to the voters, maybe more, a little more time to see what the other city managers come up with and things like that. So whatever we're presenting is the best, the best proposal to cover whatever we feel is important on behalf of the city. So I think that's what the mayor was referring to by maybe pushing this out to the next meeting. So, but, you know, I don't know. It is going to be curious to see what all the other cities think of this. I think Millbrae has been an example of county not handling things well here. And it's just, I think it's really important to see what the impacts are. I think a concern that hasn't yet to be mentioned is, again, well, I think the city manager did mention it, San Francisco PUC is the largest landowner in San Mateo County. So in any one of the cities here, this could be used in such a way that would impact each and every city should San Francisco PUC decide to take advantage of that here. So it is a concern, and I would be open to hearing everybody, but yet continuing this to the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this also, so timing, right?
Yes.
So the continued to the next meeting of the City Council, which is September, that's not going to work if the council decides to place a local initiative.
We need to backdate that for 88 days.
Well, the deadline's August 9.
Okay.
And so there's an action that has to be taken by this council if you want to place a local measure.
We could have a special meeting.
By August 9. So that's why the board of supervisors continue to August 6, giving them plenty of time to, you know, have their debate and then determine to hit that deadline on August 9. So if you do desire to continue it, I would recommend the evening of August 6, your normal city council time, 6:00 or 7:00 p.m., whatever the desire of the council is, then we'll know, because the board of supervisors meeting is that day, we'll know what language and how they're proceeding, and then we can actually have a conversation to determine how best Millbrae should proceed.
Before I get to other council members, they also, City Manager, they also wanted to reach out to all the city managers in every city to get their opinion. So it might also be beneficial for us to establish some sort of an ad hoc subcommittee to help you, to assist you, to respond to the county's questions and their outreach. to help you, to assist you, to respond to the county's questions and, and their outreach so that we can respond appropriately to help guide this process. I mean, that's just the recommendation that I have. Councilmember Ash Schneider?
I apologize. One, one more thing. So if I may, I, I think that that's a very good idea.
Right.
And the request yesterday of the board to reach out to see what the city manager's opinions are, there's not a city manager that I know of that is not going to go to their council and have this discussion and seek what the council would like to do as policymakers within their municipality. So that is gonna take some time. Unfortunately, time is not on any of the city's side because of the August 6th deadline and, and of course, August 9th by, by state law to put items on the agenda. So time is of the essence, so I think that that would be a very good idea, actually.
All right. Councilmember Ash Schneider.
Okay. Thank you. I was in attendance for the full duration at the board of supervisors' meeting. I would start by saying thank you to Supervisor Pine for his questions. They were fairly technical on that. A huge shout out to Supervisor Canepa, and I'm gonna write, read to you what I wrote of his concerns. He believes that, there was a lot of questions to the county executive about the timing of this, about how quickly. Supervisor Noelia said, hey, well, we are on vacation in July, so we couldn't do this, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, Supervisor Canepa said that the county has a responsibility to alleviate the concerns of the 20 cities. There was some Hart Board stuff claiming that Hart has unanimously passed something on there and how they basically are a good representation of the city. I will appreciate and say thank you to Supervisor Mueller, who said the timing is really fast and they haven't had time to look at it. And even in their discussion yesterday, they were talking about, well, they never got to wordsmithing the actual measure. They were talking about the timing of it, and they recognized that they've had a holiday. They have not recognized that a good number of the cities have July off, and then the rest of us have August off, and there is that August 8th, August 9th deadline on that. But thank you to Supervisor Mueller for giving us more time. C.E. Callagie said that he would reach out to the county city managers. He said that over the last six years, he's established a very good relationship with all of the cities. But the end result was that Supervisor Mueller would like a, a letter from each city telling them what they think in the timeline that will get into the public record by their meeting on, their next regularly scheduled meeting on, on the, on August 6th on that. You know, different comments on different sides, a lot of discussion about this does not implicate the city of Millbrae. My biggest concern after listening to that and after hearing the city attorney, or the county attorney, say some things that I do not believe are true on that in terms of which would have precedence over the other. If the county goes forward on the current election schedule, would they have precedence over anything a city might do because they got there first, which points to why we need to move somewhat quickly on this, on that? And there, there was a lot of discussion about what constitutes a public agency, and there was direction back to Mike Callagie, county executive Callagie, to tighten up the definition of what public agencies would qualify for this. And in fact, again, thank you Supervisor Canepa for mentioning SFPUC, and they all immediately went to water pipes under the ground. And I talked to the supervisor after the meeting saying, our largest landowner is SFPUC, and it isn't just the El Camino Real land, it's all our canyons. And if they wanted to put housing in the canyons and we have no say, how will we evacuate people in a fire? Which goes back to why I strongly think we need to move ahead. I do agree with coming back and giving up more of our August recess on that, that only city governments know their cities well enough to know the existing land uses, the existing laws, the existing coverage with their police and fire to be able to make decisions that keeps everyone safe. Our number one goal is to keep people safe. My other fear, and which is why I am so active on La Quinta, is it is, and I have been diving through every city's revenue streams, believe it or not, Half Moon Bay's number one revenue stream is hotel tax, and they're now looking at a structural deficit. Our number two source of funds is hotel tax. And every time I brought that up to the board of supervisors, they simply don't care. I talked to Supervisor Pine before the meeting saying, Supervisor, you sent, I sent you the data. I've discovered, we didn't really talk about it. And I said, doesn't this change your mind? Do you not realize how valuable commercial properties are to a city that is 87% residential, has huge portions of our land owned by agencies that cannot build, like the wetlands by 101, or will not build, or will do whatever they want to do on that, and it simply does not mean anything? And I am very afraid that the county's ordinance will give the ability for Hillsborough and Portola Valley and Woodside and Atherton to vote to say, yeah, county, do whatever you want, and it won't hurt them because they don't have hotels and commercial property. It hurts us. So I think we need to protect ourselves. Thank you. I have many more notes on this, on the discussion. It went on for two, two and a half, three hours yesterday.
All right. Thank you, councilmember. Mr. Vice Mayor, and then followed by councilmember Kaylin.
Yeah, it seems like we could benefit, obviously, from a legal analysis. Has there been any consultation with legal?
Yeah, there has, Vice Mayor, and, yeah, I know, I know. So there, there's a conflict of interest. So I was just looking at him to speak, so they have a conflict of interest because they represent the county.
All right. And, and, and to that question, oh, sorry.
So we've been working with Minette, and I'm gonna actually be reaching out to another law firm on this. And the, the, the issue at the end of the day, and I think councilmember Schneider had brought it up, is if, if there's competing measures.
Right.
Which one takes president? And there is no case law on that. County council yesterday was asked the same question because they got word of, of our agenda, and they came out, county council even confirmed there's no case law on it. Because this, what the county is doing is so unique, I don't think it's ever been done before, the way the county's actually doing it. So that's why there's no case law.
Right. So that, that's what led to my question as far as, you know, what happens hypothetically if the BAFA measure passes? We put the ballot on the measure, it passes, and then the county has a measure that passed? Like, is there an analysis, at least from your point of view, what happens if BAFA passes? All three of them pass, and our city says no on the BAFA, but it still passes? We pass a measure saying no, and then the county passes one that says yes, or, you know what I mean? So what happens if, you know, if that were to happen as far as, you know, not necessarily our own, our individual opinions, but like, if you don't have a analysis of that, we should start there, and I think before moving forward, because it's almost like, are we creating problems, legal issues? And so that will cost us in the long run? Or do we just go ahead and do it with the hopes of protecting us in the long run? You get what I'm saying? Like, it's, it's easier to have it and, and not necessarily need it than to wish we would have done something and, and didn't, so.
I think that latter is what I would recommend, but it's still a work in progress because, again, there's no case law on this. Now, there is some recent case law. I think the city of Rodondo Beach passed a local ordinance of their constituency. That went to court. The judge ruled that the Rodondo Beach, because it went to a vote of their citizenry, overruled some state laws. But they're a charter city, not a general law city. So there's a legal difference between charter and general law. So it's something that is being researched and analyzed, and as of right now, we don't have an answer on those competing items. If BAFA passes, I would say, you know, that, that's something that's being analyzed, that that would probably cure Article 34, but we don't have that actual final yet, so.
Okay.
That's why for the county putting this on, the way they did it, is accelerating this, right? And so that's, that's why we're here.
So we're doing this with the hopes of basically saying, hey, we're gonna try to at least secure our rights and freeze them in time. If we can use it, we'll use it.
Yeah.
If not, we'll go from there.
Yeah, and I, I think that's right, and, and as a municipality, that's what I would recommend, you know? As of right now, that, that could change tomorrow, it could change by the end of the week, based on the legal.
But that's the intent. That's what I wanted.
Yeah, that's right.
And then those extra times required in order for us to get those legal opinions so that we can come up with the best scheme possible.
And if, we can get a fact sheet on the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority's bond so that we can correct the earlier statement, whatever that is here, but as I understand it, this will be presented to all nine Bay Area counties, and it is not polling well in San Mateo County. It's at 45%. But if the other counties vote to approve it, then we would still be bound by it. So it's, it's more of a county thing than a city thing. And again, in the other Bay Area counties, it's only polling at 55% too. So that, it would be great, and I'll try to get a fact sheet for the council's review and all of our understanding.
A fact sheet would be good.
Just to make things more complex, right? So there is also a difference between the financing, right? That's a funding, a bond measure versus this question on Article 34. So this question that the county's proposing isn't, shall we increase a tax? Shall we fund a project? And so there's no funding source, there's no specific project. That's subtly different than a bond measure or a special tax or something that would go to the voters.
All right. Okay. Okay, so we'll go to Ms., councilmember, we can't hate anyone, we'll come back to you.
I have one question for clarifying purposes, and then I'd like to hear public comment before I give my other comments.
No problem.
On this. City manager, in your presentation and example, you talked about permission for county to build homeless shelters, and you use that term a couple of times. From my understanding, Article 34 is about low-rent housing, which is very different than a homeless shelter. And those are, I just want to make that very clear to the public because in the La Quinta project, there's very unclear information. I believe a very large percentage of our community believes that the county wants to build a homeless shelter. So I want to make sure that in our presentation, we're giving the right information and also acknowledging that homeless shelters are not part of Article 34, low-rent housing is. So just to put that, that point in clarification.
I would say we don't know that, right? So Judge Feyman, we've learned a lot through this process.
I believe the resolution said low-rent housing, right?
Yeah. So, so Judge Feyman mentioned you could make $100,000 a year and still be homeless. So, so your point, right, is, I understand that, and that's still left to be vetted out, so.
Just because a homeless person is moving into low-rent housing doesn't make it a homeless shelter. A homeless shelter is a type of service with, it's either congregate or non-congregate, where people are there for a 30, 60, 90-day stay, maybe with case management, maybe without no payment made. Very different than low-rent housing where they have a lease, they pay rent, it's permanent housing. So just, I really want that very clear for the record. Thank you.
Fair enough. All right. Councilmember Ash Schneider.
Going back to the vice mayor's comment, Supervisor Pine was the first person to ask questions, and they talked about the bank of housing, of opportunities that they look at. And basically, his, his response from Mr. Callagie was, for example, some city chooses not to, to do this. The bank of the county, which I got confused a little bit, meaning money, so there's the bank of facilities or, or plots of land, and then there's banking. And what Callagie said is that they would have an equitable process and probably the money going to those that are shovel-ready. Again, I have been diving into where the county's money for permanent housing of any form has gone to. It's really difficult to track it through the system that the county has. Their own annual budget book I've gone through, all 600 pages, and I can't identify things within it. But my nine years of paying attention to this is that certain cities have gotten the bulk of these monies, usually because they've got a relationship with housing NGOs. We don't have a lot of that relationship up here in North County, so a lot of this money has gone south or central county, with the exception of a couple of big projects to South City and Daly City where they have community development block grant funds that can be matched into this. This is how the housing system has worked. To me, while I was sitting in the audience, it's San Mateo County, the grand jury had its report, it missed a lot of critical information in the grand jury report, like the economic impact of the cities that have Project Home Keys, two of them now going into structural deficit. The county should be auditing where their funds are going before they're planning on spending money and doing yet another program without knowing how well they have spent this. But at least according to Mr. Callagie several times saying, you know, if, for example, Millbrae does this, they could still come back to us for that. But it does give us the protection in there, and I was trying to find one other.
Councilmember, if I may though, because, on that, so the bank of units that they were discussing, if a city chooses not to use those, that's what this Article 34, I believe, the, one of the objectives of the county placing is. So if a city doesn't, a county or another governmental agency can, within, within the municipality, within the jurisdictional authority.
Well, I, my experience tells me that smaller cities have a harder time on any kind of infrastructure of being shovel-ready. We simply don't have the money to do all of the prep work on speculation. So that gives the advantage to certain areas or areas with very close relationships with Mid Penn Housing, Housing, or Mercy Housing or any of the others. And I speak that because my house in Mountain View has a Mid Penn project, so I follow it entirely.
It's important though, because that's different. So what you're talking about is partnering with a Mid Penn, or that is totally different than what this issue is.
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
I'm just saying that when they say that there'll be an equitable process for how money is distributed, I do not believe, and I am collecting the data now to show that this county is not equitable in its funding. And I'm not saying, oh, you know, very wealthy, you know, I'm gonna leave it like that. This county is not equitable, nor has it ever been equitable. And I will take that back to Millbrae's very roots, when they carved off Millbrae and gave it to SFO and have five revenue streams from SFO, and none of that money comes back into the immediate area, what are called the closing communities, most impacted by the damage of the airport. That inequity has existed from our very beginnings.
Let me just clarify one thing. It's my understanding that the board of supervisors craft out the initial resolution that includes all agency. For example, San Francisco Airport, they own land in Millbrae. In fact, they own land right on Millbrae Avenue. So that would have been, if that measure were to pass, SFO or, you know, City and County of San Francisco could have done anything with that piece of property and built whatever they want in terms of housing, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Subject to CEQA and all of that, certainly, but, you know, that's what this measure is about. And when certain criticism has stated that this initially could potentially be one of the biggest blank check being presented to a governmental agency, that's, you know, we're just gonna put some context around that. So with that, you know, we will come back with more debate, but I'd like to open up for public comment first, and I have Mr. Ken Smith as the first speaker, if he's still here. All right. We'll go to Mr. Nathan Chen, followed by Steve Vrenauti.
Good evening again, esteemed Millbrae City Council members. I think that in the abstract and Article 34 ballot measure that would empower Millbrae and the stakeholder agencies who, who have the best interests of our community at heart to develop workforce housing, teacher housing, affordable housing that meets our community's needs is absolutely a tool that we should have, and we should be thinking about an Article 34 ballot measure in those terms. I've heard so many of you on this council talk about how much you would advocate for affordable housing and be prepared to sell it to the members of this community and sell a project that would work for our community. I think an Article 34 ballot measure would present that opportunity for you to all put your money where your mouth is and take, make that case to the people for the betterment of our, our entire community. I do think, I do, I am happy to hear some of my concerns about the particularities of this specific ballot measure and its interaction with the counties are going to be investigated. I think that is, we need to give the voters a clear idea of what the consequences of their vote will be. You know, my own opinion, it would be great if all the measures passed as an affordable housing advocate, but if they're happened to point in different directions, I don't, I don't think any of us want to go to court for the next year trying to figure out the constitutionality of dueling Article 34 authorizations and/or lack of authorizations. thirty-four authorizations and/or lack of authorizations. The last thing I want to say is that my observations as someone who doesn't, you know, I support affordable housing, and I am often, I've been sort of educated about how it's developed, is that the current system is kind of, it's like because of Article thirty-four, we have to engage in this sort of weird financing scheme where we have to find a development partner. Wouldn't it be so much better if we could, you know, fast-track it, be empowered, again, to meet our community's affordable housing needs? That's how I think we need to think about this issue. That's why I think an Article thirty-four ballot measure someday could be the right answer. I do have some, I do have concerns about this specific one and the timing today. So I hope you'll think about that and deliberate on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. We have Steve Rinaldi next. Do we have Mr. Rinaldi in the audience? We'll go back to you. Gina Miranda, please.
Hi there.
Hi.
Gina Miranda, longtime resident of Millbrae. I enjoyed hearing what you all were talking about today. Appreciate it, all the input and additional questions. But I'm, I thought I knew what this was about, and I'm just getting more confused by the moment. So it concerns me that, anyway, like Nathan Chen said, we need a clear idea of what approval means, what is the ballot measure going to look like. I've heard some confusing things about what's being said, who's saying it, how it's being interpreted. And I'm like, ah, who's going to make this simple for us? Somebody has to. I would recommend something like what San Mateo Daily Journal does, which is to make it very simple, and include some of the background of this Article thirty-four, because that I do know. It has an ugly discriminatory past, and it was set up back in the, I don't know, forties and fifties, when people were trying to get around housing people of different colors, of different races. So we definitely want to avoid that. And what concerns me is when I hear Mayor Fung talking about going to the community, and I'm like, how are you going to do that with this confusion? And I also hear fear tactics being thrown left and right. They're going to do whatever they want, we're writing them a blank check, it's homeless shelter. And I'm like, okay, that's, we don't need any more of that. We need clear facts. Where does this article originate from? How is it going to help us? What are the pros and cons? So I ask that for all of us, because I know more people are more confused than I am at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Sidica, would you please do call on the online speaker, please?
We have one online speaker, and the name is Karen iPhone. If you could please accept the unmute.
Hi, thank you, Karen Lobo. So I think most of us agree that housing is important. What we don't agree on is how to address it, while at the same time not harming others in the process. Mike Calagie, again, is pushing an agenda without proper due diligence, not taking into account the consideration and impact on cities. It's conniving and not acting in good faith towards residents. Article thirty-four allows residents who know their city the best to have a voice. I can't stress enough how important it is to protect local control and preserve voting rights of all citizens. All constitutional rights should be preserved. We saw women's rights removed. I think it's important for us to stop trying to take away rights from each other. Lastly, homeownership is one of the largest wealth builders for individuals and families. Rather than only promoting housing units that keep people as low-rent, in low-rent units, and dependent upon the government indefinitely, housing activists and politicians should advocate more for below-market-rate housing units for purchase. Homeownership adds to individual wealth and encourages investment by individual that is not experienced by renters. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the comment. All right, we're going to leave public comment period open, and then we'll just bring it back to the council for, okay. I'm sure we're going to have another round of debate here, so, but I'm just going to leave the opportunity for public comment open until a little later time. Go ahead, Councilmember Papin.
Yes, I would appreciate our expansion of the facts as presented here, and note that one of the speakers from Housing Leadership say therefore housing, but yet would not support our four hundred and eighty-eight units at the BART station. So there's discrepancies throughout here. As we progress and even after this, I would ask that we look at how we maintain affordability. There are certain aspects out there that we can try to freeze, or, you know, when somebody puts in an application, you mark the median average income. There are certain things we can do here, because that is the problem. Our median average income keeps growing exponentially, and we cannot, we need to figure out ways. So again, that's a future issue, I understand that.
But that's also state law. And so if we want to be effective, then we need to go to the state legislature. If I may, and I apologize, because I know this is confusing, and this is where the wheels start to come on. Article thirty-four does not prohibit affordable housing, low-income housing, any other program. All it says is that if a governmental agency acts as a developer, okay, they put their Republic Urban hat on, they put their Schornstein hat, as the governmental agency, you have to go to your board, which is the voters, to have them say yea or nay. It's only when the governmental agency acts as a developer. If the governmental agency funds a project in a public-private partnership with a Mid-Penn, a bridge, you don't, Article thirty-four is not required. So I need the council, actually the county, to be very clear on what this is. It's not prohibiting the development. And we have fifteen percent inclusionary, we may go to twenty percent. We have life, so this is only when government agency is the developer, the sole developer. That's it.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, we'll go to Ms. Councilmember Kaylin, and then we'll go to Councilmember Anne Schneider. Go ahead.
I hear that it is only for one single avenue, but I think it's important for us to think about, do we want to potentially completely shut down that particular avenue when overall there are so many challenges to creating affordable housing? I agree with my colleagues up here on taking more time to look at this, not making a rushed decision tonight. I think other things that stand out to me about this particular language is just as it could be a blanket pass to open the door, it's also a blanket pass to shut the door, not only to other entities, but to ourselves as a city, if this was something where ever feasible for us. It doesn't have a time limit on it, it doesn't, you know, specify different parameters for different agencies. So maybe looking at getting more specific. I know South San Francisco has passed an ordinance on this, and it's specifically just allowing the city to build housing themselves, and I believe it's for a period of eight years, and then it would have to come back to the voter, the council, and the voters. So I think for us to be more thoughtful and thorough, so that it's not a full slate one way or the other, also getting more community input. I think timing, not only rushing into the November election, but our city being so heated around the La Quinta issue, it concerns me that it might kind of cloud how folks think about and understand this measure, and the timing of the measure, and what it really means for the long term. And, yeah, so, those are some of the things I put out there.
So the language in the staff report is exactly the language that the county's proposing. And there's a reason for that. But I think the question, and this goes to the Vice Mayor's questions earlier, is there still needs to be some legal analysis. Let's say, let's say that this all-or-nothing thing, that the county and then we have on our staff report for really discussion purposes, let's say it passes. I don't know that if another project comes through, and that's put on the ballot for Article thirty-four, I think that that would still be legal. So let's say that, you know, either yea or nay, a future project, say the city, right? Say we grow, and we have a housing authority, and we want to, you know, do a development project. I don't think it prohibits us from taking the item back to the voters and saying, hey, we want to, we want to get a favorable vote on this project. So I think what it does, it, there's a protection in there. But anyway, so.
Doesn't Article thirty-four as it is already provide that protection?
We believe that, and we believe now that the county believes that. But it hasn't been, there's no judgment on that yet, so. You know, and if it's ever taken back to the voters, which we actually anticipated, I thought that it would be this November, but it was pulled off, and as I understand it, from the state of California, there are so many competitive housing resources, and this is really complex. And, but it really isn't, right? I mean, as I said, there's a lot of holes to go down, but it's just very simple. And I think that that's why the state of California did not take it to this November ballot. But in the future, you know, chances are probably will, and if it is overturned by the voters, then all this is for naught.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Try to respond to a couple of questions brought up. I think Councilwoman Papin was talking a little bit about preservation. And there was a discussion yesterday at the county about preservation, and about the difficulty of funding it. I reached out to Mid-Penn, because I know Mid-Penn a few years ago, and they had said that the trend was to move away from preservation. If you remember before COVID, there were big hotels being purchased in San Mateo and Redwood City that were naturally affordable housing, and they were being converted, upgraded to market-rate housing. So there'd been a big push for preservation at that time. I'm a firm believer that we've got some apartments here in Millbrae that could benefit from preservation. The county discussed this, where it may or may not show up, they didn't come to an agreement, they simply talked about it. I believe that now that we have in lieu fees, those are something we could use. There was a discussion about the affordability, and I do strongly believe we should be doing more for preservation on that. The same time, the amount of money the county spends on a project home key could go for more Section Eight housing vouchers, and we keep them in apartments included in with everybody else on that. So Gina, I'm not, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Papin, I'm not sure if I answered your preservation. They talked about it, they didn't come to a resolution. In terms of the report, I appreciate what Ms. Miranda said about how confusing this is, even for someone like me who dives into the details, it's still confusing. City manager, if we do a staff report for whatever August meeting, could we build out the example of the Rollins Apartments? Because the way the Rollins was structured, we still have property tax, correct?
So nonprofits, well, I'll look to Mike on the tax, the way nonprofits versus for-profit. But on that particular one, we do, because Core is a for-profit developer. Sometimes we do not, it depends on the nonprofit status of whoever's developing it.
Well, the reason I like the Rollins, and this has been the hardest thing when I talk to the public, or even other elected officers, is you have a source of funds, and you have a use of funds. So, and this is why it's so logical to me to, I'm sorry, Governor Newsom, stop taking viable hotels, because you need that money, you're growing your population, you need that money to care for your population. To me, it's simple math, and I don't get how other people don't make those connections. So I think the Rollins in a staff report explaining how all that works could help the public understand why we have to fight for certain things, and why we're open to, for example, looking at a project on the 7-Eleven parking lot.
Actually, I think, if I may, that's going to confuse the issue.
Okay.
The Rollins is not, is not an Article thirty-four issue. It's not Article thirty-four.
Well, then we don't really need Articles.
Article thirty-four, again, all it says is that if we, if you as a city council are a developer, you have to go to the public to get the project approved. That's it. Now, if you as a city council say, let's bring in a nonprofit developer like Core, and help augment and fund it in a public-private partnership, that's exempt from Article thirty-four. It's only when the governmental agency is a developer. That's it. So the Core project, all the other projects that the city's been involved with, public-private partnership, other cities, where you go, you have funding, you develop an RFP, you get the RFP, and a private nonprofit or for-profit, whoever it is, as long as it's not the city, that's not an Article thirty-four issue. It's only when the governmental agency, it's that simple. It starts to get confusing. Like I said, then the public gets confused about, oh, we're never going to build affordable housing, we're never going to invest. Well, we are. But I personally think that unless we're a housing authority or something like that, the best way to go. And until San Mateo County did their thing, for years, ever since my career in nineteen eighty-six, I never even knew what Article thirty-four was, because it was always public-private partnerships. It was a funding mechanism. It really wasn't until San Mateo County's doing their thing that has actually raised this issue. And they're doing it again. And I think, you know, we need to counter that and protect the city, protect your decision, you know, as a council. So it's not, the sky isn't falling. I think we need to pursue and continue to pursue affordable housing. We have our mandate in our housing, but anyway, so.
And I would just finish with, Mayor, my takeaway. I thought at the beginning of the meeting, it might have been a three-two vote not to move their measure forward because of transparency and collaboration and timing. I came away, they definitely have three votes to put this on the ballot in November, which dictates we must do it in November.
So let me do this. Unless there's further comment from this council, I'd like to make a motion to, I think there was, we certainly need the time to continue this debate. I certainly believe that it would benefit, you know, all of us, to have the public greater opportunity to participate in this discussion. And so I think commencing some sort of a public outreach process would be important regarding this potential ballot initiative. City manager, is that possible? I'm pretty sure it is.
It is, Mayor.
Okay, great. And so, you know, what I like to do is make a motion to continue this meeting and this item to August sixth, six p.m.?
Yeah.
I'm seeing nodding head. You okay? Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, you good? Six p.m. on August sixth, creating, so also to assist and to work with the city manager to respond to the county and craft out the potential resolution languages, I suggest that we create an ad hoc subcommittee to work with the city manager on those issues. Respond to the county, craft out the resolution languages, and help guide our responses to the county of San Mateo. And I'm happy to volunteer for that subcommittee.
And I would volunteer for that.
Okay, all right. So that's my motion.
I think we, oh.
Go ahead.
Second.
Just answer my question.
Good, perfect. That's my motion. Legal?
I'd just say, the ad hoc appointment ought to be informal.
It's part of my, it's part of my motion.
Yeah, it's, no, it shouldn't be part of your motion.
Huh?
Should not be part of the motion.
It should not be part of the motion, but to create the ad hoc subcommittee is part of my motion.
Right, I would suggest it not be, because then it becomes more official. You should continue the meeting by your motion. You can appoint the committee, subcommittee yourself without council action of yourself and Councilmember Schneider.
Great idea, I'll second.
I can explain later, but that's.
All right. So I made a motion with.
Second.
Second from Gina Papin. Okay?
Just a question on timing. If the county is having their vote on the morning of August sixth, and we're having our meeting in the evening of August sixth, and we don't do a letter ahead of that, we will not be heard by the county. There's just a timing question in there.
So the ad hoc subcommittee would likely to work with the city manager ahead of time.
Okay.
Right? And between now and till August sixth.
Okay.
There'll be.
Just be aware of that.
Right, there'll be, there will likely to be numerous discussions on that, and continue to, as this thing develops.
That's a good question, because, I mean, what the county's done is you put all city managers in a very difficult position. We may have to have a special meeting called of the city council to review that letter, to make sure that we have a majority of the city council on that opinion, or the position that we submit. So just, keep that in mind. We may have to have a special meeting called of the city council to review that letter to make sure that we have a majority of the city council on that opinion or the position that we submit, so just keep that in mind.
All right, okay. Any further comment from this council? Legal? So this is a continuation of this item and the meeting? Both? Okay, I want to be clear. So it is on the record. 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
August 6. City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
Item number 19 is continued to the special meeting of August 6 at 6:00 p.m. by the vote of 5 to 0.
All right, so just limited council comment, and then we'll continue the meeting to August 6 at 6:00 p.m. Who would like to go first?
I will.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just like to say to my children that are here still asleep, thank you for coming, and just continue to always know your why and to be true to yourself. That's what I'd like to say to you tonight, and, you know, if you don't stand for something, you'll always fall for anything. And I'd like to also thank the voters of Milbrae on both sides of the recent ballot measure for participating in this legal democratic process for I am who I am because you are who you are. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Who would like to go next? No comment from Ms. Pappen?
I would only, a quick report from Bay, I'm sorry, Mayor. Bay Area Water Supply, we met as a board last week. We are going ahead with the process. We've hired a company to do the executive search to replace Nicole Sancola. I've let staff know that this is happening on that. Everybody feels pretty good about that process on that. I would say that there was a discussion, San Francisco PUC came up and talked about how they're spending a lot of millions of dollars on water supply. And I bring this up now because it was kind of sad. The issue of PIFAs, Forever Chemicals, are now covered under three, at least three federal guidelines, and they may come in and become a problem for recycled water. So I was sitting next to a board member who is very much an advocate of taking brackish water or salt water for desalination for fresh water, but just know that that's something I think we should look like. The basic feeling was that the rules and regulations for PIFAs are going to be tightening up over the next couple of years, so just something to be aware of. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, and we will continue this meeting on August 6 at 6:00 p.m. Thank you all.